Good evening, I'd like to call to order our school board meeting for Monday, January 22, 2018. If you could rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, America, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Ms. Cornigay, I think you have some introductions to make.
I do. Happy to welcome back tonight Ms. Reagan Young from Leesburg High School. Welcome back. We'll hear from her in a few minutes, but just a brief intro to this very impressive young lady. She has taken honors, advanced placement, and dual enrollment courses, and will have 22 dual enrollment credit hours upon graduation. She is ranked fourth out of a class of 289 and has a 4.93 weighted GPA. She has been involved with Student Government Association, the National Honor Society, Future Farmers of America, Triad, HQ, Senior Class Committee, and Cheerleading. She has volunteered her time in preparing baskets for the homeless and for those affected by the hurricanes. She's participated in Christmas food drives, coat drives, and at many church functions. She is working at St. James Episcopal Church, caring for children, newborn to six years old, and also working at American Telecommunications assisting with billing, banking, and errands. So, welcome back, we'll look forward to hearing from you soon.
Alright, thank you. At this time, do we have any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda, board members? I know we have a couple of emergency items.
We do?
We do?
Yeah, we have two emergency items. Both of them are in regards to travel and the timeliness of them for when the events are taking place. One is for Eustace High School Jazz Band to attend the University of North Florida Jazz Festival performance and clinic, and one for district staff to attend the I-Ready Southeast Blended Learning Symposium, which is sponsored and paid for by Curriculum and Associates.
We will deem those an emergency due to timeframe. I'm gonna pull 10.01 for discussion as well. Any others? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to the approval of the minutes.
First, I'd like to recommend approval of the minutes for the regular school board meeting, January 8th, 2018.
Okay, you've heard the recommendations. Recommendation, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Did you have any other minutes?
That was it.
That's it.
That's it? Okay. Alright, we would like to ask Mr. Hogan to come up. I think we have some recognition to do. There he is. Thank you, sir.
Good evening Superintendent, school board members, and parents, families, and friends. Tonight, we'd like to recognize two athletes who had outstanding athletic accomplishments in Lake County this past fall. If I could get Mr. Mathias to come up and give out our first award. Our first athlete that we're recognizing is Justin Watkins from East Ridge High School. Justin couldn't be here tonight, but Coach Jason Robinson, is Coach Robinson here? Coach Robinson was gonna accept the award for Justin, and some of Justin's accomplishments this year are, excuse me. Yeah, I have another one there in a second. But Justin's accomplishments are, he was All Central Florida Team, Spectrum Sports Top 25 State of Florida, he was All-State voted on by Florida Sportswriters, he was 2017 Florida Player of the Year, ESPN Top 100 nationally, Under Armour All-American, and he is committed to the University of Florida just yesterday, and will be signing with them February 7th. So, let's give Justin a round of applause. Our second athlete that we'll recognize is Jonathan Yon from Lake Mineola High School. He was a 3A State Champion golfer this year. Some of Jonathan's accomplishments are 2014 season, he helped Lake Mineola High School reach the state finals where he finished 27th in the state. 2015 season, he individually qualified for state and finished 12th that year. 2017, this past year, he was district champion, regional champion, and 3A state champion. And he is the first Lake County State golfing champion since 1951, and he will be going to Liberty University on a scholarship this fall. And I know he has a lot of family, friends, and all his coaches here who have done a lot to help him be successful, so let's give them a round of applause too, all their support.
We would love the opportunity also as a board to recognize you, so if you wanna come up here, we would love to shake your hand and wish you congratulations and... I know you already sat down, I was hesitant, but we always like the opportunity to congratulate you guys as well, so. At this time, we are having public input, and I would like to call the podium Mr. Steve Tibbetts.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Superintendent, Cornigay, and board members. Before you start consenting tonight, which is a continuation of your efforts not to talk about things in front of us, I'm going to try to suggest there might be a couple of things you wanna at least think about. The first one I'll talk about is a contract before you tonight for $259,000 for your Seems amazing to me that your accountant and your superintendent have to go through all sorts of metrics and ratings and evaluations, but you're ready to hand out $250,000 and consent to it without what I can see as any of those things. Secondly, I'd like to talk, because it continues to show up, about the five laptop computers that are being scrapped from Leesburg High School to the tune of $1,295,000 each. They lasted a grand total of four years. These were computers went into teachers' hands and somehow got managed to be destroyed. This is a pattern. If you go back and look at your monthly reports, it's a pattern. I would just simply ask the question, what's being done about these people who are destroying your property? Finally, I want to talk briefly about item number 8.09 regarding performance matters of assessment. Sometimes when I read what comes before you, I'm mystified, but obviously, none of you are. But I'm just gonna read a sentence on the first page of Background and Rationale where it talks about "used to measure student progress more organically." I hope you all know the definition of that word before you approve this policy. I'll go further. Under academic growth, teaching, and learning. First of all, as I read that, it says you're going to create, or should create, a super teacher, put 'em on TV, and then have checkers in the classroom, because they're gonna have the same things and the same lesson plans, so teachers won't have to do that anymore. Look at that. And then down, it says, and by the end of the year, 80% of the teachers will be proficient. Now, tell me what you're gonna do about the other 20%? And then wonderful language that people have putting together effective resources.
Mr. Tibbetts, your time has expired. You're finishing. You can wrap it up.
Anyway, I would check some of the language in this before you approve it to see if you know what you're approving. Thank you.
Thank you. And in fairness to Mr. Tibbetts, on his public input card, he put consent agenda items, so I'd like to offer you the opportunity to pull any of the items that he mentioned in his public input.
Yeah, can we do 8.09 and 8.11?
Okay.
I'd like to do 8.12 as well.
So, 8.09, 8.11, and 8.12. Yes?
12 or 2?
12.
Oh, I missed her. Okay, thank you. Okay, next I have Mrs. Smith.
Good evening, everyone. They're passing down to you an updated version of FEAs concerning the eight ways to retain and recruit teachers in Florida. They've updated their data, and so I wanted to make sure that you had a copy of it. But just real quick for public reference, it says that teachers believe that we should focus on student learning, allow more time for teaching, reduce high-stakes tests, provide competitive salaries, support early-career teachers, retain effective teachers, create avenues for advancement, and recognize success. Lake County raised the beginning teacher salary to $40,000, but we need to retain the teachers that we have. Each month, we're having anywhere from 20 to 40 teachers resigning, and research suggests that it costs from $7,000 to $15,000 per teacher for a new teacher to be properly trained. Many new teachers do not hold a teaching certificate, and they do not have a degree in education, so it costs more to train them in those particular cases. Every teacher we lose hurts our students and wastes time and money. Our students are depending on us, and they deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sykes?
Good evening Superintendent, members of the board. My name is Mike Sykes, I'm a teacher at Leesburg High School. Tonight, I've come to speak about a concern that many in the community, our schools, and myself as a teacher share. From what I'm hearing and from what I can see on daily basis, there's a shortage of substitute teachers in Lake County. I say that because I hear it from our teachers and our administrators and the families around me. Yet, when I picked up my daughter from daycare today, the owner tells me her daughter Shelby Reynolds is a licensed nurse with a bachelor's degree and is living here in Lake County while her husband is deployed out in Afghanistan. She applied in December to be a sub and has yet to hear from anyone about her application. I do have her phone number, so if you need it, I have it right on the back of my car. Alright, so, I know and trust my administrators. I know they've done everything they can to remedy the problem within our school, but it's not a school-level issue. I know they've reached out to other schools in the county and the district leadership for advice and assistance, and the solutions given to them were honestly already in place. These incentives aren't working anymore either. The shortage has placed a great deal of stress on the teachers, the support staff, and our administrators. However, those affected most by the issue are our students. We've done everything we can to mitigate the issue and work with limited resources we have, but now we need your help. We have teachers giving up their planning periods for incentives such as passes allowing us to leave when the students leave at the end of the day, the opportunity to wear jeans in comp time for hourly employees. This incentive runs out when teachers like myself have enough passes to last us an entire month. Even if I do leave 20 minutes early, I'm just taking home the work I'd be doing at school, so the incentive is moot. Other teachers, especially ESC support facilitators, are being pulled to sub in classrooms all day, resulting in students with IEPs not receiving the accommodations guaranteed to them. Strain is felt moderately by the teachers that have classes with five to six periods of support facilitation and no support facilitator. When the ESC testing personnel are taken out of classrooms, the students cannot be afforded the testing accommodations in their IEPs and 504s, and the students must wait till those individuals return to take those quizzes or tests. When the burden is felt on the student the most, is at that point. These students have to miss a class where a new topic has been taught and expected to catch up on their own because a key teacher can no longer go back to help them. And the support facilitator has been pulled that day to sub, so the help is lost for the teacher. Now, we take those students that already struggle, force more weight on their shoulders, and then finally something happens that gets the attention at the district level. It's not a phone call that goes to the teacher, the ESC department head, the principal, or even superintendent, but the daily commercial. Okay, should we lie and wait for the worst scenario to happen, or should we be proactive and find a real solution to this issue? I'm sure we're not the first county to encounter this obstacle, let's reach out to others around us and start thinking outside the box to fix the problem before it winds up on the news, or worse, a student doesn't graduate from Lake County because they weren't offered an opportunity here that they could've gotten somewhere else. We want to be a destination district, let's stop scaring away our families we already have and show our resolve when these issues arise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Either one is fine.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Madam Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight. My name is Chris Barnhart, and I am a teacher, and it's a privilege to be here this evening. I did check the minimum height requirement, and I just barely made it for the podium, so grateful for that. Tonight, in only three minutes, it's really hard to talk about the issues we have as a district. Your job is very hard to sit there and just take everyone's issues, because individually, none of us can solve anything. It really takes teamwork, and I just wanted to reflect for a brief moment about what I think a destination district looks like. When I close my eyes and I imagine what a destination district looks like, it almost looks like what one of my students described to me as an Emerald City, a district, a place where people want to come, a place where they look from Orlando, where you can hardly drive, or any of the surrounding parts and say, "I wanna go there. I wanna raise my family there. I want my children to go to school there." That is a destination district, and we can be a destination district. I believe with every fiber of my being that we can be a destination district. We can be that Emerald City in which everyone wants to come and be a part of, but it will take us working together, asking hard questions, solving tough problems. And I have recently been met with a significant amount of obstacles, but also a significant amount of support of people saying, "Let's sit and talk. Let's figure this out. Let's work together." So, I am encouraged by that, and I'm grateful for your time this evening, and I believe in our vision that we can be that Emerald City, and we can be that destination district. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. Alright, at this time, we'd like to recognize Mrs. Brown. Welcome back. We are very glad to have Mrs. Brown, Mrs. Young, sorry. We are very glad to have you back, and we can't wait to hear what's happening.
Thank you. Good evening. I wanted to begin with saying a great thank you to the Lake County School Board for graciously inviting me back to speak for a second time. It is an honor within itself to be sitting up here amongst such important people to the Lake County schools and community. I am privileged to be discussing recent happenings at Leesburg High School and within the Student Government Association with you all tonight. Just since I was here last, on January 8th, much has occurred at LHS. We are a campus that never stops progressing. Our most recent achievement would be the finalization of prom. As the student president of my school, myself along with my hard-working student government representatives took on the role of planning prom and have been working diligently trying to locate a venue to host the dance. Yet, after weeks of searching, we have finally booked an amazing location, a local venue called Lake Receptions in Mount Dora. To come next for the Student Government Association and Leesburg High School is to wrangle in student volunteers throughout our campus who are eager to help us with prom. The reason for having student volunteers help alongside SGA, or the Student Government Association, is to encourage more student involvement in school, and it is also a great way for our peers to gain community service hours. Community service is an important aspect to all high school students. This past Thursday, Student Government had an official meeting, as we do every month. At this meeting, I challenge the representatives of each grade level to bring back an idea for volunteering to the next meeting to expand our horizon on community service projects. Now, hopefully, the next time you see myself and my fellow SGA members, we will be out in the community working hard at whatever volunteer project is thrown at us. Now, on to discussing a more crucial topic, as I think it is best for you all to hear from a student's perspective on the subject. I am sure many of you have seen the media the past two days with Leesburg High School name all over it. Statistics are showing that as of right now, Leesburg High School has the lowest graduation rate in Lake County, and only one out of every three seniors are possibly not graduating this coming May. I am fully aware that this is an inexcusable problem, a problem that needs a solution sooner rather than later. I have grown up in this town, and I've always been proud to say that. I have been in this high school through all the administrative changes resulting in having three principals throughout my four years in this school. Personally, I believe that seeing so many administrators along with teachers come and go has greatly affected the students on this campus. Mr. Randolph has worked hard to shed some positive light on the subject by calling meetings with these struggling seniors. Do not get me wrong, these students who are not scheduled to graduate need to take responsibility for their own actions, or lack thereof, yet a friendly administrator or teacher can tremendously help these situations. All students are different. Some need that push from a caring or concerned teacher, especially if they are not receiving that push from their guardians at home. The number of guidance counselors could also have a huge effect on these seniors. Ms. Griffin Gay, our senior guidance counselor, works wonders for these students, but there are over 200 of us and only one of her. We need more guidance counselors to focus more clearly on each student and ease the pressure off of Ms. Griffin Gay. Also, another large concern would be that majority of my peers are not driven enough to attend school. I define that as pure laziness. Those who are complaining about not being a part of our commencement ceremony are those who are not even showing up to school. On one hand, classes can tend to be boring or slow, causing a lack of motivation, but that's every school. Maybe to solve this, teachers can make classrooms more interesting to potentially encourage these students to come to school more frequently. I have had numerous amazing teachers throughout my experience at LHS who put forth an effort to establish a bond with myself and other students, which has greatly impacted my endeavors in high school and helped keep me on my right path. Teacher-to-student relationships are at an all-time low. Once again, I am not putting blame on any specific person, I am ashamed to hear the news about our graduating seniors and hate that our school is once again in the negative spotlight. For the sake of the on-track and overachieving students such as myself, it is disappointing to say I'm a part of this era. Leesburg High School desperately needs the support of the community and the school board, and this evening, I ask of all of you to give us support and not let this conversation end here. As the voice of the students, I wish that you will sit down with our students to ask why they are going down this path. Our biggest concern for non-graduates is their attendance. Just finding an answer to why they do not come to school could tremendously solve this problem. I hope that within these next few months, our graduation rate inclines. Thank you again to the Lake County School Board members for kindly inviting me to speak in your presence. I am flattered to say I could experience this amazing opportunity not only once, but twice. I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Ms. Young. And I have to say, I'm sure I can speak collectively, that when we hear from a student, it leaves a huge impression on us. We appreciate your honesty, and we appreciate you coming forward with that information. You are certainly a shining star.
Thank you so much.
Alright, I think Mrs. Carmen Colompas, next Education Foundation report.
Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent, I am absolutely pleased to stand up in here and announce that we have been once again ranked nationally. Our foundation has been ranked in the top 50 education foundations in the United States, and this is for two years running. There are eight performance categories considered to earn top rankings, and they include total revenues, revenues per student, total assets, assets per student, grant and program expenses, grant and program expenses per student, and investment income in volunteers. The study was conducted by Crowther's Institute. Teacher of the Year finalists have been tapped, and they are Faith Gillian from East Ridge High School, DeeDee Bitter from Seminole Springs, and Jason Lancy from Wendy Hill Middle School. The winner will be announced at the celebration on February 10th, and all 47 nominees will be receiving a new chair, compliments of Ernie Morris Enterprises and Han, as well as many other prizes. But our winner will be driving away from the celebration in a Nissan courtesy of Jenkins Auto Group. Our rookie teacher packets are with the judges, and that event is gonna be held on March 14th, and we will be recognizing 43 outstanding rookie teachers. Night of Stars, recognizing our school-related and volunteer, is scheduled for April the 18th, and our Apple Mart has served 301 teachers to date with a distribution value of over $22,000. I have some special guests with me tonight. AT&amp;T offers competitive STEM grants through the consortium in the amount of $100,000 annually. Lake County is the recipient of two of the 47 grants that were awarded throughout the state this year, and representing AT&amp;T is Mr. Dan Pollak, and he is the Regional Director in Corporate External and Legislative Affairs. Mr. Pollak, would you join me, please? The first recipient of a $2,000 grant is Aaron Porter from Round Lake Charter School. Round Lake will be designing and building an outdoor nature classroom. Academically, the students will gain knowledge of science standards. Socially and emotionally, the students will improve their teamwork abilities, communication skills, and self-control. Behaviorally, attention span and concentration will be enhanced. In a global sense, the students will become more educated and then become more environmental stewards. They will also be practicing mathematics and engineering skills during the planning and construction phases of this project. The long-term goal is that the nature classroom will grow to include a pavilion, more complex gardens, and equipment, learning stations devoted to a variety of subjects, and a nature path. Our second winner is Tessa Clark from Leesburg High School. She's also gonna be receiving $2,000, and Leesburg High School students will engage in STEM activities that promote environmentally sustainable and the application of alternative energy and urban development in order to construct a scale-sized, sustainable city. They will then compete using energy whiz and develop a device using photovoltaic cells. And again, thank you, Mr. Pollak and AT&amp;T.
Ladies, we'd love the opportunity to congratulate you as well. We'd invite you to come up here and shake our hands as well.
Congratulations, and thank you to AT&amp;T again. Our Take Stock staff was in Tallahassee to recognize Asia Lavender. In December, we all met Asia Lavender, and she is the first Lake County Leader for Life ever. And we also, while in Tallahassee, recognized another Lake County State winner. And let me repeat, that's four for this year. We have the Teacher of the Year, we have the School Board Member of the Year, we have the Leader for Life. Now, we also have the Take Stock in Children Alumni of the Year from the state of Florida, and that is Mr. Anthony Ritter. Mr. Anthony Ritter graduated from Aron Tavary's High School in 2007, went to become a teacher, and is now one of your teachers at Eustace Heights Elementary School. He was also a finalist last year for Teacher of the Year. And Sheri, would you mind? I've got a three... I've got a three-minute video of Mr. Ritter.
Take Stock in Children means to me really giving someone a chance that wouldn't have had one otherwise. They gave me an opportunity to go to college when I didn't think that was an option for me. My parents didn't necessarily make the money to send me to college. I didn't have the academic grades to send myself to college. But Take Stock in Children saw that I had a drive, and it really changed my life, being able to know that I had a scholarship to attend college, and it helped motivate me to work harder. And when I struggled, I just had to push through those struggles to do my absolute best.
Anthony Ritter really embodies what Take Stock in Children is all about. He connects with his students in the classroom. In fact, he has returned to the classroom because of his love of education, and I think he is the perfect example of what our program can produce.
Take Stock in Children has had a huge impact on my life, being able to attend college without stressing about how I was going to pay for it and really focus on my academics. And they allowed me to really receive the training I needed to receive to become an educator, and they gave me a purpose for being an educator.
Mr. Ritter is a dedicated professional who spends countless hours engaging students with real-world lessons in the classroom. He encourages students to do their very best, and if at first they don't succeed, try and try again, because success comes from effort and hard work, not simply talent.
My teachers really helped me in school. It was one of the reasons I chose to become a teacher. But the other reason was because Take Stock in Children believed in me, and so I wanted to show other students that I believe in them and can support them when they struggle.
To see him now with the Rookie Teacher of the Year and then with the Take Stock Award, totally proud of him. I'm totally excited, and I think it's a wonderful program, and he is a role model for Take Stock in Children.
Mr. Ritter started our Vex Robotics team, and they qualified for the state championship competition for the first year that it was in existence. During the second year, Mr. Ritter added additional teams due to the high student interest. He has had a tremendous impact on Eustace Heights for the past three years and will continue to impact the students at Eustace Heights for many, many more.
I'm completely blown away. I had no idea that I was even nominated for the award or even considered a contender for it until I was notified. I feel very honored, very blessed. Take Stock in Children did a lot for me, and to be honored with this, again, from the same organization, is just, it's an honor. That's all I can say.
Mr. Ritter is with us tonight, and he's supported by his principal, Chad Frazier. Mr. Ritter, do you have a couple words?
I'd like to point out that I deliberately asked her, "Am I going to have to say anything?" No.
That's how she rolls. Just saying.
It is how she rolls. I understand. I understand. I'm very grateful to the program. I'm very grateful to be working where I'm currently working at. I absolutely love my job. I love being a teacher, and I think that that shows in the students, because I really love the kids that I work with. And I now am, three years at Eustace Heights, I have some of the kids in my classroom that I've had for all three years, so it really helps form this bond with the students that some classroom teachers just don't get. So I'm thankful to the program, and that's all I can say. Take Stock in Children is a phenomenal program, and I hope that it continues to have many more years of success in Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter.
That is my report. Good news.
That was a great report.
Are there any questions?
I don't have any. No, thank you for what you do. Thank you, AT&amp;T. Congratulations, Mr. Ritter.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Johnson, top that.
Yes, ma'am. The only item I have to report is that pursuant to your direction, I engaged the Rumberger firm in Orlando to represent the school board in the class action case being brought by FEA. Mr. Dietzen has approximately 40 of the 67 counties that he's representing, and my understanding of the cost savings was that they would take the majority of the costs and divide them by 40, and that's what we would end up having to pay. So it should be a pretty good savings. The motion to dismiss has already been filed timely, and it raises issue with many of the legal issues that are brought by the plaintiffs as they relate to the school districts. And now we'll just have to wait and see how it goes through the court. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we are to the consent agenda.
All right, I recommend approval of items 8.01 to 8.08, 8.10, 9.01 to 9.04, 10.02 to 10.04.
You've heard the motion?
A moved.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass is 5-0.
If we could go ahead, and let's take the two emergency items before we move to the discussion items. The first one is approval, recommend approval for Eustace High School Jazz Band to attend the University of North Florida Jazz Festival Performance in Clinic. There is no fiscal impact on that one.
You guys have heard the motion?
A moved.
Second.
Okay, all right. A motion by Sandy, a second by Mr. Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Lastly, for overnight travel for district staff to attend the I-Ready Southeast Blended Learning Symposium sponsored by Curriculum and Instruction and paid for as such.
Okay. That was a motion.
I recommend approval.
A moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we will start with, what, 8.09, I believe. Mr. Dodd, you polled, but in response to Mr. Tibbetts, so if you want to start.
That's right. And actually, I had received a few different calls from teachers this past week, just trying to understand what this is, and I thought by polling it might give the superintendent and her staff a great opportunity to explain just exactly what that is and why we need it, and so they can understand the benefits.
Okay. Well, we're certainly happy to do so, because we're excited about this item. One of the things that I heard often, as I began in my early days visiting with teachers and visiting schools, was we have multiple data systems. You want one piece of student data, you go to this system. You want this piece of data, you go to another system. And so I came back and said, "Could we please have one data system?" So this is the culmination of a lot of work between the IT Division and the Transformation, Curriculum and Instruction Department, to really look at one system, a robust system that would give teachers access to timely and relevant student data, as well as replace some of the multiple contracts that we have. So this is going to allow us to eliminate some contracts and have one data system that's going to be a more robust system. I know that Mr. Weeks is here, and he can speak to it in detail, and then any instructional applications information, Dr. Weiskopf is prepared to speak as well. So if you'd like to hear more, they're happy to present. This is an item that I think is one that we would like to workshop. One of the things that I think would be great for you to see, so that you and teachers can see all the aspects of the program. We're just starting to roll out the training plan, so we'd like to get kind of underway, get some feedback, and really get it in use before we brought it to you for a workshop, but certainly is one of the items that we have on an upcoming workshop. So I don't know if you'd like more information. They're happy to come and share any specifics of the system itself. One of the questions I spoke with you about this week was, I know we had already bought part of this program, so what is the difference between this part and what we're now buying? If you could speak to that.
Do you want to come on up? So I'll start, and then I'll let, like, Dwayne either correct me or add to it, okay? Is that all right? So what we have currently now is the static part, which means we can dump data into the system. So we can, for instance, our I-Ready data could be brought over to the system. We also have our FSA data that's in here. So that's what we currently own. What we are purchasing with this contract is the MTSS piece of it, which allows us to track student progress and interventions over time, as well as the assessment piece, which will allow us to develop assessments and do our own item analysis based on our own tests that we've created. So those are the two big pieces that are additional pieces. Is that right? Anything else? That's the two pieces on those. Yeah. So it sort of gives us the whole picture and the whole package in one place, whereas before, we have a different way to track MTSS and kind of built on our own, and this just allows it to be in one spot. So we need, we're seeking approval so that we can have the system, so that we can workshop it to show you sort of more about it, but we don't have access to those pieces yet to be able to start training and do some of the work that we have to do. I can give an example. Today, I was meeting with the superintendent, one of our regional executive directors. We were talking about how easy it was for now principals, we're talking about principals, and how they had disaggregated their data really quickly, had gone and pulled their lower cortisol to see, had tracked their learning gains. You can do all that now, because it's literally a click of a button. I mean, I'm kind of anxious for you to see it, because it is really, really user-friendly, and is very different from what teachers and administrators are used to currently.
So the test, the test-making portion, is it a portion where individual teachers make tests, or is it a district-making test, where the district makes one, like, benchmark assessment, and then pushes that out to all teachers?
We would have access to both options, so we have access to all that. So we have access to still keep our teacher banks. We can also dump previously made tests on Edge4, we can actually, we're actually working on merging those over to the system, so teachers won't lose the assessments that they've created for their classroom in a different system. We can also have teachers, they'll have access to items themselves, so they can make small, mini-assessments, they can make small formative assessments along the way. It'll also allow us to create district assessments, so both. Anything you want to add that maybe I forgot? How are you doing your notes? Any other questions?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. All right, I think we're ready for your recommendation.
Recommend approval of 8.09 procurement of the Performance Matters Assessment and MTSS modules. Okay?
A moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll go to 8.11, the Contract for School Board Counsel. I'm not sure, in this realm, who, I know we're pulling for discussion for the public.
I know it was brought up during public input, and I kind of rolled the dice and expected if I was gambling on this one, that somebody would undoubtedly address this. It comes up as a topic every year, and in fact, is one of the topics that initially that I was quite passionate about when I first got on the board, and I thought, "Why are we spending so much money when there are other districts out there that hire their attorney in-house?" And so then I did some analysis on this one, and I compared, well, what are we spending against these other districts who hire in-house? And yes, okay, we could have some full-time people on staff, but then I discovered that by the time you look at what these other districts are spending on outside services, because their in-house is only so specialized, and they have to contract all these other services out, they're right back to where we are. Or more, in fact. You're right, absolutely. And so I thought, this is probably not the area of savings, and I know there are some benefits that are existing by going with a firm, because then you get the benefit of a pool of experts, depending on what your topic is, versus our in-house might not have that same depth of knowledge. So I guess I've walked down this road a couple times and ended on the same conclusion.
I just want to say, in the past, we have had an in-house attorney, and she later became superintendent. But she did not have the background and everything of the, what Mr. Johnson's firm does for us. She was able to do things that we needed to have information day-to-day, but not be there for the board doing as this firm, and that's the difference of what you receive.
The one point, if I could also kind of think about, that Dr. Tibbetts had brought up, was that, you know, we as a board only have the flexibility to hire so many people, the auditor, the superintendent, and the attorney. We evaluate two of them, but we don't evaluate the other. So I don't, you know, so then when it gets to this decision in January, it's always, "Well, I don't think he's led us wrong, so I guess we'll continue." You know, maybe there should be some sort of process for us as a board to reflect more specifically on the previous year, so that way we can know that the decision we're making is still the right one to move forward.
I'd be happy to put together an evaluation.
No bonuses attached.
That we then submit to you.
That's right.
We will be checking that evaluation carefully.
I think that, my turn?
Okay. Yeah, no.
I just have, I have a comment for a second, and I echo it pretty much every year. And some six years ago, I did look at, when we were trying to squeeze every dime, and you look at what you're spending on legal, and I spoke to Mr. Johnson about it, he goes, "Well, people would quit suing us," and our meetings were a little shorter, because he bills by the hour, that it would go down. And it has significantly, over the years, has gone down, just so you know. So anyone thinking about suing us, we ask you not to. And anyone wanting longer meetings, then I would highly encourage that we don't do that. But I will say this about counsel, and I've said it now pretty much every year also, that my dad, when I started my company, he said, "Have a good CPA and a good attorney." And I will tell you that I have served, that Mr. Johnson is the most capable counsel that this county could have. And if anyone complains about his hourly rate, then be a local business and try and use someone in his firm, and you will pay a significant amount more. So the value absolutely is there. He's undervalued from the standpoint of pay. He makes it up in his commitment to our kids and to this district.
And I had that written down to say, so nice job, Mr. Weiskopf.
Oh, sorry.
We do, and I think that's the benefit too of the public, that we do go through this quite frequently. This tends to be a high-dollar amount, so I know all of us have done our homework on this and come to the same conclusion. So we were discussing, one thing to note as well, is that the budget item that we have is an estimation, just that, so that the actual monies that come out of our budget are in direct comparison to what we spend the dollars on. So this year and last year, we've actually gone down. We were looking at that. So we have a projected budget here, but we're actually looking right now to be under that budget for two years in a row and under last year's budget, so that was reassuring as well. So, all right. Oh, yep, Dr. Burns.
I'm the only one who didn't speak, so I'll go ahead and speak. I was one of the people who pulled the item last year and was pretty adamant that we needed to have cost savings, and I was also convinced, like I think everyone here, that we couldn't find better, we really wouldn't, we really wouldn't recover more cost savings by finding a different counsel. And I've been really, I'm trying, I hope this comes off good, but pleasantly surprised at the quality of, man, that was just the worst backhanded compliment, wasn't it?
I'll take it as a compliment.
And really, the quality counsel we received, so I appreciate the service that we've gotten. So I'm in favor.
So I think we can put on, maybe in upcoming workshops, something in regards to looking at an annual, maybe that would alleviate some of the conversation.
There's some other counties that do it, and it'd be easy to find a couple for you to look at.
Great. Okay, perfect.
I'd also like to look at one for school board members.
We have talked about that before as well.
Maybe we put them both on a workshop.
Yeah, sounds good. Ms. Corneke, you have a recommendation?
I do have a recommendation, but I would like to just echo your sentiments, and I have worked with many board attorneys before, and I don't know that I have ever worked with one who's so timely. Anytime I call, he takes my call, or he calls me right back. It's truly amazing. It's very much appreciated, so I highly recommend approval of the Contract for our School Board Counsel.
A moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, perfect. We are on 8.12 Removal Fixed Assets from Inventory.
Mr. Wheeler, would you come to the podium, please? I'd just like, if you will, some of the things that he brought to our attention about the computers, and one is about the 2014 computers. How did they get destroyed? And maybe you can elaborate a little bit more, that they're not really destroyed, but that what is wrong with them?
I don't have any information to...
Okay, I'm sorry.
They're from, they're from Leesburg, and they were deleted from Leesburg High School, so I, I mean, we can research that, I mean, and see. But generally, the schools just submit them to property, and they're deleted off their inventory.
And sometimes the problem is, is the software.
I'm sure it was dropped, probably, but we have about 26,000 computers out there in the school district, so this is just a small percentage.
Right.
We, a few years ago, we purchased laptops for middle school, high school, and elementary teachers, and that's the laptop that was there.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I thought you might have known a little bit more about it, so...
No problem. That's what I have.
But like I say, from what I understand, in some cases, is that the software that is on those computers are no longer compatible to what we use in some cases. But then in some cases, also, the person using the computer... some cases also, the person using the computer has abused it maybe. So, if that is the case, maybe we need to have the administrators on campus be a little bit more attentive to why they're replacing those computers.
And I thought, and I thought maybe, Dr. Wheeler, you might know, like, the warranty that we, or that, not the warranty, but we do have some insurance, I know that when we spoke about the iPads in the classrooms, like Manuela and so forth, there was a replacement piece to those contracts.
We have a three-year warranty.
You want to come up here and tell them? Yeah, thanks.
We have a three-year warranty when we purchase them, purchase the computers, they're a three-year warranty. And generally, a laptop will last five years as the life expectancy. For, we get, as you can see, we get much longer out of them, I mean, we're deleting things at 2005, 2008, for the most part. My philosophy on a computer is, when we get rid of it, no one should want it.
Right.
Don't many of our computers go from high school to middle school to elementary?
No, we haven't.
Don't. How come our elementary schools tend to have 15, or, what do I hear, 12-year-old computers?
Well, when they built the school, it's when, generally, I mean, for student stations, that's when they went in there, it's like, of course, Eustace Heights has the newer student stations, because we just built that school. And then like at Groveland or Mascot, those computers, when they built those schools, is when they went in there for the student stations. But the teacher...
Those are hand-me-downs, right?
The teacher station, when we refreshed, we got, we got, there was a problem with the laptops a couple of years ago, and we replaced the teacher stations for a small amount of money, we rolled those computers down to, for student stations. So some of those were rolled down, we purchased those computers for $300 apiece, because there was a problem with HP.
Perfect, thank you, Dr. Wheeler, we appreciate you coming up. Any other discussion? No, okay, superintendent?
Recommend approval with removal of fixed assets from inventory.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that takes us down to 10.01. Mrs. Christides, I pulled this item actually because I remember, don't quote me, but two and a half, three years ago, when you first had this idea, so if you want to come up here, she's got her staff here, you guys see the purple shirts, they have worked and worked and worked and worked to get this program implemented at their school, Mrs. Christides brought some information for us, if you want to come and hand them to Natalie, she'll pass them down for us, and we just give you the opportunity to tell us what this program's about and what you guys are planning to do for our students as a result of it, and we just want to recognize your hard work and steadfastness.
Well, I just want to say that we would never have been able to do this without our parents, the community, our business partners, everyone just pulled in. I know it's been two and a half years, but we're talking almost $160,000, so, so excited. And this is Mrs. Froman, she has been so instrumental in this process.
Come up to the mic, you've got to come up to the mic, and then she can.
She has been so instrumental, I just, you know, she came to me and I kept pushing her, think larger, think larger, and she did, and she researched this, we took a team to Colorado, including one of our SAC members and the science program specialists for the district, and everybody was amazed at this program. Do you want, and I didn't get to go, because I had to stay back at the school, but Ms. Froman led that, do you want to tell them?
Well, the biggest thing we did was we got to play in the snow, it snowed before we left, and they were taking pictures of the Florida teachers playing out in the snow.
Nice.
But when we went to, you know, we read about this, and we saw videos about this, we saw the commercial about this, but we were talking and we said, that's a lot of money, you know, for something, we want to see it in action. And so it took us a while to put the paperwork together, we went out to see it, and I'm not kidding you, the three teachers and the parent, and even the employee here with Lake County Schools, it almost brought us to tears, because we went to schools with 95% free and reduced lunch, we went to schools that were very low socioeconomic families there, when you walked into that room and saw them working on this science lab, you could not tell there was any difference in the learning in that school. We had children with special needs, you could not tell which one they were. I saw some extra people, I said, who are these people standing around? Oh, they're the assistant for the special needs students, and I thought, where are they? You could not tell, you could not tell which children were ESAL kids. These kids, when they worked on the STEM lab, they all came together, it was just a program that just made chill bumps come over, and when I came back and I said, it's going to cost us $160,000, she said, well, whose house are we going to mortgage? And so we went begging, and we went, we went to every community member we could go to, we went to, we wrote grants, you know, we did all kinds of things, and it has been two and a half years, and people thought we were forgetting about it, no, we're not. So we're very excited, especially for our kids, not just our school, but for those children, and we can't wait to see, and can't wait to report to you the benefits, you're going to see the benefits.
I was going to say, I don't know about you guys, but I can't wait to go see it in action at the school, so.
I've had a sneak peek, it's pretty cool. I was saying I had a sneak peek, and it's pretty cool.
Our implementation period, we're hoping third week of May, and we're running, wanting to run it through the summer with our ELC children, so we're really excited about that. It has been, it's been a wonderful experience, I'm collecting the money and going through this process, but I'm going to tell you, it's going to be even better putting it in so that our kids can have this opportunity.
Thank you guys very much for coming and for bringing your support staff behind you, and I can tell you with the commitment that you guys have had, the investment's going to be worthwhile, so. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I do, I am very pleased to ask for your approval for the agreement with Creative Learning Systems for Implementation of the STEM Lab at Treadway Elementary School.
Okay?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? I didn't think so. All right, we are on, we are on 11.01, the Revisions to the Superintendent Evaluation Tool. I know you had...
Yes, you all have a copy of the proposed revisions to the document. Why I made some revisions is one, that I wanted to align these to the Florida leadership standards, there was an older tool that was being used, and so I wanted to make sure that it was more up-to-date and aligned to the current leadership standards. It also reflects and more closely aligns to my action plan. I sent you all a copy of it, if you don't have it in front of you, I thought there was one in your packet. It aligns closely to the action plan that I began with, and my recommendations for, that were focused on the goals and objectives for this year, are also included within that document. It's more concise and eliminates some of the redundancy of some of the items that were on the original, so I'm asking for your approval to these revisions of the Superintendent's Evaluation Tool.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll give the second to, yeah, I was going to do that, as soon as I got the second, I'll give it to Mr. Gamble, and then discussion, you're next, it's like a jump ball. All right, Dr. Burns, did you have some discussion?
Yeah, I missed the email, so.
So, user-friendly, can we click on the scores and have it compute automatically and save some time off the lawyer's plate?
It actually will, as a matter of fact.
I thought so.
Because it is an online document, that will do all the tabulations for you, thanks to Mr. Weeks, who, I think he's left, but he actually created us a document that you can actually do online.
Fantastic.
A Google Doc.
We're going to do that with the internal auditor also.
That'd be a great idea.
We probably can do that.
And the attorney.
That's right.
That's right.
The future, in the future.
And the school board. Great.
Okay. Is the rubric still the same that we saw?
Yes, the rubric is still the same.
Okay, I think I figured out my, I had it up and now I lost it. Okay, my issue with the rubric was the third point, which I no longer have in front of me.
Reasonable progress one?
Yeah, the reasonable progress one, the one that has, I think, I think, my problem was that I had trouble giving any, if you're going to call it one, two, three, four, five, I had trouble giving any threes, because it says, in the case of unusual or unforeseen circumstances, and I'm thinking a car accident, or like, she's ill and in the hospital and can't go to conversations with Corneke, you know, that's what I considered an unusual circumstance. And the rest of it, I finally sort of feel like, the rest of it reads fine, if we were to strike unusual or unforeseen circumstances, it's basically saying, it's, this is a C because it's in progress, and that makes sense to me, but when it's unusual or unforeseen, I'm like, well, I can't give her that, because nothing weird happened. Like, for example, graduation rates, I don't expect them to be 90% this year, because it's going to take time, but that's not unusual or unforeseen, but it's something that's a work in progress. Does that make sense? So I was wondering if you all would be okay with striking the unusual and unforeseen section?
From the three, to keeping the three, keeping the reasonable progress?
Yeah. Because I think that was actually my real issue, I was trying to figure out what my real issue was.
Maybe it's reasonable progress considering all circumstances, and...
That would be fine, too.
So, such as, there might not be something unforeseen, but a good excuse or a good reason, you know, that it's not going to go from 67 to 90 in a year.
I can't, when I'm filling out the evaluation, I'm stuck giving a four or a two, and since nothing weird has happened, I can't give it, I can't give it a three.
Right.
If that makes sense.
I don't think there's any objection to that. Do you have any objection to that?
I have no objections to that, so I can correct.
Great.
Make those revisions and send them back out.
Are there any other comments, discussion? So...
So we can approve it as a...
I was going to say, can we approve it as it is, or do we need to make a new motion?
Call you and tell you to fill it out.
You still have that job.
You got it.
Electronic warning, you know, I don't...
You actually send us emails saying, look, this has happened, and give, and what was it, the band comes out and plays, because Christie has the only one that's turned this in?
Newsflash. You would just go ahead and vote to approve the change to the evaluation.
As noted?
To be included in the next evaluation process.
Okay.
So do we want to strike the motion? Can you re-motion?
I recommend approval of the Superintendent's Evaluation Tool with the stated amendment.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? No, perfect. Okay, Mr. Mock, I know that the superintendent has asked you to put together a brief PowerPoint for us on the Workplace Accountability Hotline, which we have all been anxiously awaiting.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Madam Superintendent, tonight I'd like to provide a review of the work I have completed for updating the district fraud hotline. The proposed name for the hotline would be Lake County Schools Workplace Accountability Tonight I'd like to review with you and kind of go back to the beginning, I guess, in time, when I was talking about doing a fraud hotline here at Lake County Schools, a little bit of the rationale behind the hotline, and then the services gained by engaging a third party to administrate the hotline, policies, training, and communications that would go along with it, and review some of the data for why we are considering a hotline, and finally, a short review of how this hotline would work on a day-to-day basis. There's many rationale points, but I just kind of picked a few to talk through tonight. Some of the leading points would be to be proactive, a hotline will provide that for the school district in addressing issues. It also minimizes damage, when you're proactive and you get in front of a lot of issues, damages minimized, losses are a lot smaller. Also, since the state auditors have been in here for quite a few months, when they initially got here, they stopped by my office and asked, what are y'all doing for a fraud hotline? What are your policies and procedures? And I believe this will address a lot of the questions that they were raising about what we have in place for our fraud hotline. And this will also provide a very low-cost, but effective program, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, that is 24/7. And maybe this should have been my first point, is, you know, this is something that can be done at a very low cost. And this also will help show our staff, as well as the community, about how serious that the school district is about adhering to the district's code of conduct. So why a third party? I've already mentioned 24/7, you know, when a lot of the discussions were had, I know they looked at you, at me, and said, you know, why not have Tom do that? Well, I'm not 24/7, I'm not at my desk 24/7. So, a third party does provide that. And a lot of people, when they have issues, they're very busy during the day, they're not going to pick up the phone and call, they're going to do it in off-hours, or maybe even on the weekend, and a lot of that is when they go home and they reflect, or when they're not at their particular office, you know, they have time to reflect on the issue, and they want to talk to someone about it, or they just want to vent and maybe go online, fill out a report, and so that someone else can read it, look at it, and maybe take action on it. Another point is, is different languages, I only speak one language, but a third party provides capabilities in many different languages. In this case, the Third Party Lighthouse provides 140 different languages. Different methods of reporting, you know, I would be, you know, snail mail, phone, or email, while they also provide, you know, the ability to text and toll-free, so there's other ways to reach and provide the information about issues. Also, professional service, they have people that are professionally trained, when a call comes in, they can take that call, they know the questions to ask, and if it's something other than something that would be a hotline, they also have the ability to direct people to where that could be, and it could be suicide hotline or something like that, so, but many calls will come in in many, many situations. They also have the ability to follow up, if the caller provides the information, the ability to follow up and get additional information. A lot of times, reports will come in, they will not be able to be investigated because of lack of information, that would be then filed accordingly, and then it'd be up to either the, our professional service firm, if they have the ability to follow back up with the reporter to gain additional information that might be needed. Another thing is, is that the third party is web-based, so it frees our IT department of any requirements related to the hotline. And finally, a key in today's organizational culture is promote a tone at the top, and a well-managed hotline is good governance, and the agreement with Lighthouse, and, oh, and I just want to add in, that this agreement with Lighthouse has already been reviewed by our attorney's office, and they have provided their okay for it to be signed by the superintendent when we're ready. Okay, policies, I know the school board recently reviewed and updated policy 7.65, I think that was probably two, two and a half months ago, but I would like the policy to include additional elements for unethical behavior. Currently, it's more fraud-driven, but I think there's a lot of unethical behavior issues that could be added into that policy, and it's, and I've already updated it, redlined it, currently have it on my laptop, but I'd like the school board to take time to look at it and put it on for a workshop in the near future. I've stated a basic layout for, I've already established a basic layout for our standard operating procedures for the administration of the hotline and its activities. Lighthouse provides online training, so there's nothing we have to do, they have all that available and online, ready to go. The hotline communication plan is very important, and I've already met with our communication director and discussed what approach I see that we should take as far as rolling this out. I believe, in my mind, and I've expressed it to her, that, you know, we should definitely walk before we run in rolling this out, not blast it out to the whole community, but let's start with our own staff internally on our intranet website, and then go from there as far as getting it out a little bit further. This is a little bit of work that they've done already, this is a very rough draft, but it's something that they came up with, they would like to work a little bit more on the wording once we finally come to the agreement to move forward, but this is something But this is something that would be put on the Intranet where the employees or the staff would be able to see it. And the main thing about communication is, is it can't be done once and then we walk away, but we have to continue. And when I, as a good point is, is our current hotline, I don't think anybody knows the number. I don't think anybody knows where to go to get the number, at least I haven't found it yet. But I know we have one, and I know there's calls coming into it, but unfortunately, they're not hotline-related, so. Okay, a little information. Each, every other year, the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners puts out an annual report. And 2016 was the last time the report was out, so obviously, one is coming out this year. Usually comes out about the summertime. What happens is, is they do a survey of all, of their membership base of certified fraud examiners, and they complete a survey of the frauds that they have worked on, and they submit that information back. And from all that information is generated this survey that comes out. So I get, I read that report every year. It's kind of interesting because in some cases, some things go down, but for the most part, things stay pretty stagnant. And one of the things from the slide you see here is, is that 71% of the tips that come in, or where they get information about where a fraud is taking place, comes in through a hotline. So that's why I've been on the platform since I pretty much got here about the school district, you know, getting a hotline, having a third-party administrator, and beefing up our efforts in that area, only because I think all firms or all organizations have a certain level of fraud. Hopefully, you know, ours is low, but we never know. And until, until we have something like this in place, we really don't have our hands or on the pulse of what's going on day in and day out. But I guarantee you, the staff does. And I think from time to time, some come in and express that, and we do get reports or we do get information from outside parties from time to time. Unfortunately, when we're getting that, a lot of times, it's a lot bigger issue. And if, and we had the opportunity, if they would have told us earlier to address it. Almost done. Another interesting point is, is that hotlines provide the information earlier, which is what I was just pointing out, and it lowers the cost of the incident. So, and as of a fulcrum financial inquiry consulting firm has published that hotlines is the easiest and most cost-effective an organization can implement. And that's what I was saying earlier, the cost of this hotline on an annual basis is less than $0.50 per staff annually. So I remember when I first did it, I believe the cost was just under a dollar, it was like $80-something. So it's almost halved since then, and that was 14 years ago, so the cost is definitely coming down. So how will it work? It's fairly straightforward. You know, we notify the staff that we have this hotline, and I kind of showed you a blurb of what might go out. And the staff then, you know, if somebody has a situation, they should follow normal policy and go to their superintendent first to address it. But let's say the superintendent falls on deaf ear and it continues on. Well, then that staff has another source, which is the hotline, to make that complaint and fill out a report. That submits it to one of the investigators. So when they go online, or they call, or however they get the information to our third party, then they email us the report from the information that was completed, and it comes down to a predetermined investigator based on the type of call it is. Then the investigator gets the incident report, they review it, and then they go into the case management system, and they update it. It could be the first, "I've got it," then the second could be "under investigation," then in, you know, in the report mode. So very, very simple as far as what the investigator has to do in the system. As far as the administrator, my job will be mainly to oversee and make sure that the reports are moving along, making sure that the investigators are doing their job, that nothing gets stagnated, gets held up for three or four months. And if that situation happens, then obviously, I would go to someone and review the situation and say, you know, "Why haven't we moved forward?" So I can update the case management system. So that's pretty much it. It's pretty easy, it's pretty straightforward, and I think it'll, at a low cost, it'll give the district everything we need to in a robust fraud program day in and day out. So be happy to answer any questions?
I just got a real quick question. Really, it's not employee-related, but student-related. Is this something that students would be able to use lines also?
We currently have one for students.
I know, but do they know it?
Speak out.
We have one for students. You know, how we communicate it is a key. I don't know how that's communicated out. Could be like our hotline. If we're not communicating it well, then, then nobody's going to know about it. So eventually, I'd like to get like this, is what we did back in the business world was, we had posters in every break room. So in every teacher's lounge, every break room at the district offices that we have around Lake County, you know, we'd want to have some kind of information posted that staff can see it on a daily basis.
So we don't have a lot of 800 numbers floating around?
Not that I know of. I don't
We have Speak Out right now. I don't know how much you
That's the student one, right? Speak Out.
Could it not be consolidated, to Mr. Gamble's point, that we end up with a hotline number? And then my second question to this is, is this shade or is it sunshine reports?
It would fall under the, based on what type of case it is, it would fall under that situation. So if it's HR-related, then the employer relations, it would fall under the same policies and procedures that any situation that would go into the employer relations would
Mr. Mock said, "I think you would treat them differently depending upon what, if it was a criminal complaint, and you deal with it like that as far as public records are concerned." This, the, I assume that was, it was whether something's a public record was the question, Mr. Mathias?
I could see where a disgruntled employee could use it and file multiple claims or have different claims made, until it's vetted or whatever, just like we do other investigations.
And if they were making complaints, then the statute specifically says that a complaint within whatever form is part of the employee's personnel file, and the personnel files have certain protections from disclosure until the investigation is completed. So if it was that kind of issue, then it would be treated like a personnel file or something. My concern, Tom, is, don't we have a policy that says we don't investigate anonymous complaints?
Not that I know of.
Okay. Is it anticipated these are going to be anonymous complaints that are going to be investigated?
It's only anonymous if the person chooses to not provide their name.
So it's anticipated some of them are going to be anonymous?
Some could be anonymous.
Okay. And those I
I never tracked in the past how many of them were, but I remember we had a percentage that were, when I was in the business world, that were anonymous. But most of them, they shared their name. And that helped out because then we knew the exact location, the position.
But to Mr. Mathias's concern, multiple complaints by anonymous complainant could be problematic for an employee who's
Right.
Who's the receipt of perhaps something that's not genuine, but is just information intended to harm that particular employee.
Wouldn't the investigation determine that?
Right.
If, if they can find out who the person is, yeah. If they call in anonymously and leave that message, that causes, that causes a potential problem. But I mean, it's mainly to take complaints about fraud anyway, right? Not personnel issues about
Unethical issues.
Harassing.
But if you were talking about fraud, and if you're talking about unethical
Could be conflict of interest, could be
All those are striking to the core of the individual that is being charged. And I just want to make sure that we're protecting against, particularly since it's going to be anonymous, and I would imagine most of them would be anonymous, quite honestly, that, that someone doesn't end up with their personnel file askew because
They have 32 anonymous complaints against them, but we don't know who made them or can't investigate them because we don't know who the complainant is.
Yeah, my experience is 80%, 80% of the hotline calls, maybe even a little bit more, are HR-related. So in those situations, you have to know who the individual is because of the type of complaint they would be making. Right?
I don't know.
Well, it's, it's usually a pay issue, or, or I wasn't promoted, someone else was promoted, or I should
If he's wanting to have the issue resolved, you're right, Tom.
Yeah.
They would have to provide that information. You can't investigate an harassment complaint unless you know who's being harassed.
Correct.
So, but you can also make false claims without providing that information.
Or I could say I heard comments made by Mr. Johnson that, that he's stealing us blind in billing hours.
Yeah. The biggest fear on a hotline is that it will be a complaint line.
Couldn't resist.
But I've never, but I have not experienced, and I have not spoken with anybody that has ever told me that their hotline ended up being a complaint line.
Well, and even to Mr. Mock's point, I don't think he was necessarily saying that wouldn't the investigation, well, not if they gave their name. I think he was saying that if we did say Mr. Johnson was billing us illegally for astronomical, I'm just using the context situation, then upon investigating his billable hours, we would come to the conclusion that the claim was false.
But in the meantime, it's in his record, though.
I don't, but it wouldn't be in his record.
That's all I'm asking about.
Okay. So it wouldn't be in the record until it was substantiated?
Correct. Any pending investigation or any pending audit is not under the sunshine law yet. I mean, nobody can, nobody can request the work papers until they're
Is it public record, though?
Public record law.
Not under a public record until the investigation is complete.
Right.
For an employment matter.
Okay.
But after
Or not.
Investigation is complete, all those documents and records go in the personnel file, the individual employee has the right to be able to file a response in his personnel file, but the complaints all go in there. They have to be kept and maintained.
That's the current procedures, correct?
That's the statutory procedures.
Okay.
But then wouldn't that say, though, wouldn't you see that the claim was unsubstantiated against Mr. Johnson's billable hours in his personnel file?
I get that, that once we get through debating how many billable hours he actually did, and we found that it was great value, that that would also be in the file.
Right.
I'll remember that.
I understand your concern, though. We don't want somebody's personnel file to be this thick with unsubstantiated reports because they've got 36 complaints from an anonymous person about
Who could be it?
And the headaches, an employee continuously being
Right. Right.
Defending, give statements, and
Well, I mean, I think that we have to allow there to be anonymous complaints.
Right.
100%.
Yes.
I agree.
I agree.
The only thing I'm, I'm not trying to squash the reporting of it. I'm also trying to protect the person who may be innocent, is all I'm trying to do.
Right.
And, and I don't quite understand why, by statute, why it has to go in the file if it's found that it's not substantiated.
A document related to an employee, you can't destroy it. It has to be maintained as part of the personnel file.
Everything that comes out of Tallahassee always makes sense.
This is, this is not the first time this issue's come up.
But is it, is it part of their personnel if it's anonymous and it hasn't been?
Well, that's why I thought we had a policy about anonymous complaints. I don't recall where it is, about not investigating anonymous complaints.
But could it be that if it's anonymous, that it doesn't go in the personnel file? But if it is, if someone makes a claim, that it goes in there with the conclusion?
Well, I think it gets back to, the issue is whether or not you're investigating a complaint against an employee.
Okay, let's assume the answer is yes.
Then that is maintained in, the normal course of events, that's maintained in HR while it's being investigated. Once you've either finished the investigation or found no cause to go any further, that becomes a public record at that point in time. That is required to be maintained in the personnel file, but the employee is allowed to file a response within a certain number of days that goes on top of those documents that essentially says, "See, all these show that there was nothing wrong, nothing happened."
But if you were in a situation, it could end up being this thick of someone anonymously, I have no problem if one identifies
If you conducted a lot of investigations, yes.
No, I'm saying that if anyone knew me, anonymously, there could be thousands of anonymous complaints. And I would not want the, that when I'm found innocent, because I am pure, by the way, that I would not want all of those in a file folder. I mean, it just seems like a goof, because then it could be said, "Well, you had 20-something investigations," without telling the rest of the story.
I, I understand. I'm just telling you what you're required to do.
Mr. Johnson, I'll look to see if there's a policy about anonymous complaints.
I have two thoughts. Can I? My, my first thought is, again, as an employer, if, if I've employed Tom, I'm going to Tom now, and he's got 26 incident files, but I've never, his, for me, he's never had any issues, I've never, you know, do you know what I'm saying? Like, I don't, I am 100% sure that false reports get made already about people, and that, that their supervisors make decisions based on their interactions with the people, not necessarily the false claims. But my other suggestion, because I do, I think it's a valid concern, my other thought is, this is an annual contract, is that correct? This is for one year, or $2,425? Is there some way that we can, this can be like the pilot year of it, and we can come back and have a conversation about how many were anonymous, how many were unsubstantiated that were anonymous, and, and then obviously, we need to find out about the policy before we, before we go forward with the hotline, if we can't report anonymously per point of our policies?
I don't know what the policy says specifically.
And this is a Lake County school policy, not a state policy?
Yes.
Can Mr. Farnsworth come up?
Mr. Farnsworth, did you find the policy?
That's what I was looking for, too.
What I found was dealing with bullying.
That's what, that was the one we had. I didn't, we never had one for
Well, and it is, it talks about employees under the student section of it and the bullying, but it, hold on a second, because it's in a couple of different spots here. Complaints regarding employees should be filed as soon as possible after alleged incident noted on specified Lake County reporting forms, but must be filed within 30-day duty days of alleged incident. But then it goes down to, under that same section, and it says, "Reports may be, may be made anonymously, but formal disciplinary action may not be based solely on the basis of an anonymous report." And that's how it speaks to it.
That's odd.
But then that doesn't get into investigation and all those matters, so.
So what if we have somebody like you who's stealing money from the district?
Now I'm stealing.
You admit it. Oh, he's confessed.
On the record.
I think there has to be some, some background decisions made when it comes in, whether it's a fraud business-type deal, or whether it's the fair handling of an employee, that fair, unfair, anonymous accusation has been made, and what steps, and of course, would have to take place in order to pursue an anonymous complaint against someone or one of our policies or procedures. That's something that I probably would have to have some discussion with our counsel. But I think it just depends on the nature of the situation. But I definitely understand what you're saying as far as that could stack up.
And, and we're not limiting it to fraud, that apparently there is a whole wide range of things that you can anonymously call in. And in today's world, we've seen false accusations that destroy people, and we've seen, actually, that people come forward, and it's true. So I want to protect the innocent, but I want to provide this method to get the report out, so that if it's investigated and you're a piece of crap, that you are not in the system with us. But, but again, I think that in government work, when there's paper trails following, and if, if someone were to apply for another job, let's say, outside the district, and they get their personnel file, they go, here's, they got 50 pages of complaints, I just won't think that's fair.
But I don't know if there's a resolution.
Well, the resolution is, in my mind, if the complaint is anonymous, and it is found to be false, that it doesn't go in the file. That's the, I mean, I'd be totally happy with that.
Yes.
Are we legally allowed to expunge something from a record?
No.
Well, it's not, it's
Isn't that expunging?
Well, that, it would be expunged.
Said no.
It is, if it's in your record, and then you take it out, isn't that expunged?
You can't, you can't destroy part of your personnel file. There's actually an Attorney General's opinion that I requested about four or five years ago about that very topic.
But it isn't, it isn't legitimate until it's proven that it's truthful. Right now, it's anonymous.
Truthful or not is not the test.
It should be.
It should be, though.
Should be. I don't disagree.
What did we say about anonymous? That, we said it wasn't the sole reason, right?
Reports may, may be made anonymously, but formal disciplinary action may not be solely, may not be based solely on the basis of an anonymous report.
Which, that just says that if you have an anonymous, you can't go out and say, well, you're suspended because we got this report that you did this. You gotta have some other investigation that backs up what the report was.
But right now, that, in today's world, if someone made an anonymous call, because right now, you'd have to call them by telephone, I think, we don't have a-
Well, it's a telephone email, snail mail?
No, no, that's the new, that's the new thing, I'm talking about currently.
If they even someone in HR.
In HR, right now, today, if I HR'd and I said something about you, and I'm anonymous, so I'm going to-
He's a bad person.
And usually, is that going in your file, that there was a call made?
Uh, I don't think, if, if, of an investigation, what, what I believe would happen is, if an investigation takes course, then any documents generated within that investigation will become part of my file. Now, as far as the initial documentation of a complaint, that would be something we, I'd, I'd ask for some guidance on.
I think you could have a file that's called Anonymous Unsubstantiated Complaints and put them all there.
Oh.
I'd be digging that.
I would be okay with that.
A, a, a file for each person, or a separate anonymous complaint file?
The 2017, 2018 Unsubstantiated Employee Complaints.
So that we didn't destroy the document we-
Right. We kept them all, and we kept them where somebody can find them.
We keep them in Area 51.
Am I good with that?
I'm good with that.
You're good with that, Area 51?
File 51. Yeah. That's a good one.
But y'all have destroyed Steve being able to go get another job somewhere else. This is on TV.
Okay. So we can, we can do that, then?
Yeah, I think what-
Yeah, so just being- We're looking forward, is the board's okay to, to move forward with the agreement with Lighthouse, so we can put that in place and then start moving forward with the other pieces of it, and hopefully have it up and running within a couple of weeks, if not sooner.
We've been talking about this for a long time, Mr. Mock. We appreciate the work you've put into it.
So, does, but do some of the policy changes have to coincide with the use of this hotline, such as, I mean, I think a policy said that it has to be on the Lake County form, right?
Yeah.
Do we just give a stack of those forms to Lighthouse people, and that puts it on the form, and that allows the policy to still ring true, or? Because, didn't you have some sort of policy read that, that some sort of report had to be-
Yeah, I heard-
Written on a Lake County form? The Lighthouse isn't using that form, but our policy says-
No, they have their own-
Right.
Format, I guess.
So, so do we need to get the policy in line with this hotline at the same time, or?
Is that, is that a board policy, or HR's?
I, I think, well, I would assume it would come in through them, and then we would convert it-
Fair enough. All right. Right.
Because they're just reporting on the information specific to the incident that's being phoned in.
And then our people can put it onto our form.
And we can, then we can enter that into our system, whether it's HR, or whether it's an audit, or?
All right.
Hmm?
Okay.
You have a motion yet?
No.
Second.
We didn't have a motion.
We don't have a recommendation.
Not have a motion, or a recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
Recommendation.
Boy.
Mr. Johnson, do we need to add anything about the file? That can all come later. Okay.
I need to be, I need a motion to approve the recommendation to authorize the signature of the agreement.
All right.
I am recommending that you approve the Workplace Accountability Hotline Agreement.
They're moved.
Oh, all right, Mr. Dodd, motion, second by Mr. Mathias. All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. And now we are in school improvement plans, and Mrs. Carnegie did ask Mrs. Pearson to do a presentation again before a motion and discussion to give some information as well, so.
I'd like Mr. Mock to return each page, we got to see his fingers run across the TV monitor. It's very 21st century.
Good evening, board members, Board Chair, Superintendent, and welcome Miss Young as our student representative. I'm here before you tonight to give an update and overview on our school improvement plans, and then allow for any questions that you may have moving forward. School improvement plans are shared between the Academic Services and Intervention Department, along with evaluation and accountability. So we work jointly on those pieces, and where they're housed, on the state platform. In looking at the school improvement plan, there are three parts. Schools come together with their leadership teams and their staff, and also with their stakeholders, to look at, how can we annually look at our progress over time, set goals, and meet the needs for our students and for our school. There are three parts within the plan. The first part is the current school status, the second is a needs assessment, and then the third is an eight-step problem-solving process. And I'm going to walk you briefly through each of those components. There's also appendices within school improvement plan that deal with professional development, some technical assistance pieces, and the budget. This year, we didn't have them, it wasn't mandatory for them to add a budget, it was optional, because they still had to submit those things through various departments and through finance, so there wasn't a requirement for double work. But any of those budgets, if, if for your review, are always available, but aren't always attached to that plan. So the first part of the school improvement plan is the current status, and here you see schools, they come together and they talk about their demographics, things that are unique about their school, how it's a supportive environment for students, what their plans are for family, community involvement, how they meet expectations for effective leadership and collaborative teaching, and also how they plan to support ambitious instruction and learning. So those five elements are embedded in the beginning, and that's where they pretty much put their narrative and their support and tell their story. The second piece is the data-driven piece. So this is their needs assessment. We call this step zero, because it comes before the eight-step problem-solving process. Step zero is when they come together with their student performance data, they look at their early warning signs data, which refers to discipline and behavioral data, and then they also bring in learning targets and even their climate surveys. So we ask that they look at all of those pieces and determine a need. This year, we require that for their targets, they set targets minimum for all their academic areas, as well as a target for learning gains, a target for their lowest quartile or 25%, early warning signs that relate to attendance or referral data, their graduation rate, the acceleration, and then any other near areas that may have showed a need. So this piece deals with primarily data, and then based on that data, they do the third step in the school improvement plan, which is using that data to create their action plan. This is a very involved step with regard to school improvement planning process, because the first thing they do is, based on the data, establish a strategic goal. And then they put in their targets. So for instance, we want to improve in science from 60% to 70% this year. And then they look at, well, what resources are available? That might be human capital, that might be programs, that might be other options as far as tutoring or before and after-school opportunities, it might be parent involvement, but what resources do we have that could address supporting that goal? Then they also look at barriers. So problem solving around, well, what are the barriers that might be keeping us from reaching that goal, and then how do we eliminate or reduce those barriers? In doing so, they select specific strategies, those strategies that will reduce or eliminate key barriers that will move them forward to their goal. After they've done that, they create the actual action plan, based on the strategies that were selected. They come together and they create action steps. After action steps are created, they look for, how are we going to monitor those steps for fidelity, to ensure that we do the things that we said we were going to do? They list that in the plan. And then also, how are we going to monitor them for effectiveness? Meaning, are they actually having an effect? First, are we doing them as we said we were? And then second, are they having effectiveness on reducing the barriers or eliminating the barriers and reaching our goal? And then the last step is around data. So where are, or how close are we in meeting those annual targets? So those are the three components. When you look at school improvement plans, they can be anywhere from 20 to 50 pages, depending upon how much of the pieces schools have decided to target moving forward. They're housed on what is called the SIMS platform, and that is the Continuous Improvement Management System. It's a state platform. So all of our schools complete their school improvement plans, and they, on that state plan for, platform, and they publish. We also publish on the Evaluation and Accountability website, so that you can access those plans from our website, or from the public access standpoint of the SIMS platform. In years past, primarily, my role as prior director for teaching and learning was to vet and support and review the school improvement plans for what were our targeted schools, schools that were in differentiated accountability or needing improvement. And then Evaluation and Accountability kind of took care of the vetting and the review process of the other school improvement plans. Well, this year, under our new structure, we took on the review for all school improvement plans, so that they would be consistent. I know some of the feedback we received from board members prior was that it looks kind of different. Certain schools' school improvement plans may be a little bit more, a little bit more comprehensive than some of the others, and we wanted to bring consistency this year to that process. So all of them were vetted in the same way. I wanted to give you an example of a strategic goal, because sometimes this is the first goal that you will see, and sometimes people say, well, that's just too broad. But it's supposed to be broad. It's supposed to be an overreaching, kind of all-encompassing goal, that ties in many strategies that are supporting the action steps that come in that eight-step planning process. So an example, that first example there, sample school will be a safe environment for student learning and personal growth for all students. That's kind of a culture and climate goal that says, within our school, we're going to have a safe learning environment that supports all of our students and our staff, but under there, you would see specific strategies of how they would meet that. So bullying may come in there, in terms of what are our strategies to reduce and eliminate bullying, what are our strategies to retain and support our, our teachers. That would come under that strategic goal. The second, sample school will plan and deliver standards-based instruction and authentic literacy experiences in all content areas for all students. That's the example of more of an academic goal. So anything academic with regard to what we're doing for science, what we're doing for math, what we're doing to support our students in English Language Arts, will be able to fall as a strategy or an action step under that goal. So we want an alignment to our district goals, and then you see our six district goals on the bottom left-hand side. So we ask that, on the right-hand side, that they have at least three school improvement strategic goals that relate to our district goals. So one being culture and climate, another being academic achievement, and the third being something around intervention and acceleration. And therefore, they would be connected to the district goals, but also focused on areas that support virtually all the school improvement planning that a school would need to do. This is the school improvement plan timeline, and so I wanted to walk you through, because sometimes we hear, you know, we, it takes a long time for these plans. Why does it take so long for these plans? And this is the timeline that we go through in helping and supporting schools to create their plan, but also, schools have the opportunity to share those plans with stakeholders. So way back in July, we had our Summer Leadership Academy, and that was when our superintendent and our new senior staff presented the vision and our goals of where we want to be as a district, and we wanted all principals to connect to that and understand that clearly as they were drafting their plan. So there was time within that particular Leadership Academy for people and teams to work together to create some of those goals and look at their data. Then our superintendent, chief of transformation, executive directors, all conducted individual reviews and data chats with principals, based on the previous year's data, to help align to meeting the needs of the school improvement plan. Then the school improvement plan templates were open for schools in July, and then guidance and student performance data, EWS data, were provided in August. Because remember, data usually doesn't come out into July from our state, and so they were able to then use that data to drive that in August. In September, the 29th, the school, yes? I'm sorry, early warning signs. Yeah, sorry. School improvement plans were due to the district for review. So by September 29th, they had to have their first draft. They came to our Academic Services and Interventions Department for that first school improvement plan review, and that went on August 2nd and 4th. Simultaneously, we had other departments coming in and vetting October 3rd through 5th. There used to be a paper process where everyone took the paper plan and wrote on it, and then schools would get it back and say, I'm not sure I understand who left that note, or what am I supposed to do? So all of that, this year, we eliminated that. We did it on the Google Docs, and so there was actually a template, and there were comments, and so everyone was able to do it on one form, and all schools received their information very timely, instantaneously. As soon as those two days of reviews were done, they got their template, and they were able to go ahead and begin to draft any of the additional feedback. So that was by October 6th, that feedback was provided, and then we gave them roughly less than a month, because they needed to go back, and they have to share that with their SAC, they need to talk to their teachers as well, get feedback on where they're going, and get SAC approval. SAC is the School Advisory Council. Sorry. I just want to make sure. Then the final school improvement plans were submitted on the SIMS platform by November 10th. At that time, we did another brief review to make sure that we had all elements in place, and that went on from the 13th to the 30th, and then we passed it over to the Evaluation and Accountability that reviewed the School Advisory Council's materials, to make sure that they were in line, because that's a connection to the school improvement plan. And so here we have it here, where those plans have been submitted, and they're also available on the website. Common areas of focus, you will see as you review the school improvement plan that there's some commonalities, and there should be some commonalities, because we're all aligned to reaching our goals. Authentic literacy being one thing that you should see through many of the school improvement plan, standards-based instruction, ensuring that our students are meeting the rigor of our Florida standards, acceleration opportunities, and increasing the graduation rate, the use of learning walks to learn together and inform instruction by leadership teams, positive behavior support being programs that allow for students to have positive reinforcement and good choices with regard to their behavior. And then EWS are early warning signs, that they're using those signs as far as student attendance to also catch students before they fall into any type of at-risk status. And then collaborative planning, allowing time for teachers to be able to still come together for collaborative planning opportunities. And finally, in looking at ongoing monitoring and support, because I said, all those things have been written, but are we making sure that those things are taking place? Again, we had those beginning-of-the-year data chats. Initial visits have been conducted from the regional executive directors and the regional teams to all of the schools. Every school has had at least two visits, and they attach to that school improvement plan in terms of looking at, from the LEED's evaluation indicators that are aligned to those plans, that they're moving those plans forward. There's also been a mid-year review from the regional executive directors at schools with principals and leadership teams. Ongoing learning walks from the regional team for evidence of implementation of the timelines that they have submitted. And then just in two weeks, we'll have another round of mid-year data chats with the superintendent, chief of transformation, and executive directors that will further monitor where schools are with their data and planning. And so in doing all this, today's choice for tomorrow's future, we're moving forward towards Destination Lake. Questions?
So in years past, the sort of rigorous flow sheet that you showed us, flow chart, was only done with the DA schools?
The, the more rigorous vetting was done, there was always a vetting by Evaluation and Accountability. There was kind of a second layer that came from our department, because those, those school improvement plans were state-monitored for the schools that fell into DA. So I think there were more, there was more feedback from state representatives in that process of what needed to be included or added. So that was a little bit different for those schools.
So this year, we had no DA schools, right?
No.
And so?
But I used the same process that I had used with-
With all of our schools. So it's a much more thorough process that we're following now.
Well, the feedback was, I think, a little bit more in-depth than in previous years, because in previous years, we had multiple people vetting, but not always a standardization around the templates and how we were going to give feedback. So this year, there was a standardization around how are we giving feedback, how are we writing comments, and which specific areas required feedback. So that was different this year.
This, as, as we try to not put too many things on a teacher's plate, this is an awful lot on the administrator's plate.
Yes.
And in, and again, I don't want to, like a Kuna Matata, but it was busy work. No one looked at it, no one, sometimes it didn't make any sense, that some administrators thought more was better, and in my world, less is more. That could be goals. That with, with our- That could be goals that with, with our, I guess for me, it has to be, we have to have the follow-up. And at one time, we were going to have the lower schools present their plans and how they were progressing.
Yes.
We did that one time in my five years. You know what I mean? So, so if they're going to do this busy work, then let us make sure that we're really using this tool. Because for me personally, it is an awful lot of work for an awful lot of people where it would seem to me that one-on-one, now that we have these, our district folks out in the fields, meeting with eight teachers, eight administrators or whatever, that they develop their plans where they're monitored together, rather than this whole template and blah, 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 and all these dates, and then what becomes of it. And so I'm skeptical only because I have never seen this tool used effectively to improve. Just my opinion.
And I think that's where I'm hopeful this year. So I, I mean, you guys, those veteran board members have heard this be one of my biggest areas of complaint because I, just to reiterate what Ms. Mathias said, it was all this work and these schools have put so much into it, and they've looked at their data and then nothing. And, and I, I, I mean, I, I know for a fact, there were conversations that went on where our schools that were our lowest schools, and did they meet their goals? And it was, I don't know, I'm going to have to check. What? Like you, those, those schools, we should know if they're meeting their-
Well, probably not because their goal was unrealistic to begin with.
Right, right. Well-
They were going from like 30 to 90% proficient.
Right, and those realistic, but, but there wasn't even discussion of the goals. There wasn't even, it wasn't, so why are we making them do all that work? But I really feel like, you know, in looking at the timeframe, my, my, my hope, my shining hope is that we have regional directors now that are walking these buildings that say, you have authentic literacy written in your school improvement plan. We discussed that, these are your goals, but I'm not seeing authentic literacy in your classrooms. What are, what's your plan? It's, it's January. Where's your authentic literacy? And that that's going to be something that I believe this administration's got their thumb on, and it's going to, those, those, these principals that did all this work now are being held to that work, and it's going to improve their schools and the benefit and the ones that have been doing it without the wall. This is just another thing to do for them, but it's going to help us bring on board some of the strugglers or the ones that are-
If the vision of the superintendent is this authentic literacy, is that yes or no? Tell me that, because I know what that is. Anyways, but if that is one, so that should be district-wide, all schools. And so why do we have to spend a whole bunch of time filling out a form, saying we're going to do it, when that should be an expectation when the area directors are walking through the school?
So a couple of things. The school improvement plans, it is a requirement with regard to some funds being released for schools to have created one. To do it on a state platform is not a requirement, but if we even did our own, all of those elements would have to still be there. So the state platform does make it easier because some things are populated that they can tweak instead of having to recreate every year. One thing we also did, because I do hear you, Mr. Mathias, about doing a plan and then, you know, maybe it's not-
You looked through it with me.
Yeah. We looked at all the plans that we had schools doing, and principals said, I have to do a safe schools plan, I have to do a SAI plan, I have to do a collaborative time plan, I have to do a blah, blah, blah plan. And we incorporated those plans into the school improvement plan and said, here are the areas that support those things that we already have you doing. You're going to do one plan, the school improvement plan, and not have to submit those others. And then with regard to those budgetary requirements that came with the other plans, now they're embedded in there. So instead of directors having all these separate plans that they're vetting, they're, they're using the school improvement plan to tie to those budgetary areas as well.
And in the budgetary areas, where, who is helping that administrator, who, with the budget part of it? Because do they all have the capacity to be great accountants as well?
Well, the budgets will have to be approved, and then finance holds those strings with regard to that. So some of the purchases that they make, they'll go back, and I've already had finance ask me for, hey, we need so-and-so's plan, we can't find it, it's on, it's on the website because they're vetting before a purchase that that is in a school improvement plan. So we really tried this year, and I think it's been made possible from the new administration, that we can integrate those areas and make sure that we're looking at those collectively to make it more of a purposeful plan. And monitoring, the regional directors, that's something we have not had. And so with regard to that, it does make it a little bit more of a usable document with regard to the monitoring because there's someone that's there consistently and that knows what a school is focusing on.
But we had in the past, chiefs, and while the, while these regional directors are embedded in their communities or in their schools, we still had schools that were specifically responsible to certain chiefs. And again, I don't want to beleaguer the fact that it doesn't seem like much ever happened with those. So I'm hoping that what we're doing now is going to be good time and not just busy time. That's all. And, and is this is required by who to get funding?
There, there's state, some state board rules and legislation that go along with school improvement plan documentation.
So-
I can give you the sheet if you want to like review it, but there's a, there's a, there's a several statutes that connect to it.
It's a statute, but is it, again, I thought we were going to be a little more renegade-ish.
But a school should have this in it, so let me just tell it, like-
No, 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 they should have it.
Down, I should have this stuff.
But your school improvement plan shouldn't, if, if the regional director goes in and they go boom, 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 that, and here is, we're going to write this plan together. That's how I do it with my troops, that I don't have a state form I have to fill out, and I have to make sure every box is clicked so that I get funding, that a school improvement plan for one may be something else. And why spend thing, why, when there's best practices on this authentic literacy, let's say that you're off the charts with it, but there's other areas that you need some help with, but we're going to still click that box that we need this improvement? I don't know, it's just, it's, some of it just seems like busy work to me, and that's the problem I have with it. I hope not. And I hope somebody looks at it this time, by the way.
Well, the, the worst-case scenario is that, let's say you've got busy work, but then you, you just take that busy work and put it on the shelf and get no value out of it. Where I've got, where I think I've shared the same sense of optimism here are the last three bullets here on the ongoing monitoring and support, where I see the regional executive director is involved in this and that they're ongoing learning walks. And then I see our superintendent, chief of transformation, executive directors are involved in those mid-year data chats. So my guess is that we must be at that point there in the mid-year data chats, right? That, it seems bizarre based on this, this flow chart. I mean, obviously, you're not waiting now to start implementing the plan. You obviously had to start implementing it before it's approved, otherwise then the whole thing doesn't work. So, so I guess from, from my interest, and maybe other board members have the same, is just be interested in some updates of how we're trending on these things. Are we, are we seeing that we're achieving these goals here at mid-year, or how we're adapting the game plan now that it's halftime and say, all right, we're, we're going to run a different offense so if we need to, or?
Yeah. The, in looking at how they drafted them and the alignment to the district goals, I think it will have a strong supportive nature that we're all working towards many of the same things. So if we're working towards many of the same things, it becomes easier for all to monitor and easy for all to do because the support is around those things. With regard to school improvement plans, I know with our state, I monitored schools and the process that we had to use, they would not have come off that list if we had not had a strong plan in place and in meeting and working with those schools. That is the plan that I used, was their school improvement plan. That is the plan that those leaders worked, and we have no schools on that list now. So there's power in that plan. I think that monitoring has to definitely be a part of it, but right now, Lake County does not have any schools that fall into that category. And those, those principals did utilize that plan, and they did it with integrity. It, and they did it with regard to those steps that we just shared. So I do agree, there needs to be more monitoring. I think now we have a system in place with the support of the regions that can help with that monitoring. I also do agree that those plans probably could be a little less dense, right? But with regard to that, the elements that are required are all, are there as well. So we're looking forward to giving you what you're asking, and we have heard with regard to that, and it's been something that we really tried to ensure that was in place and will work, continue to work on the monitoring piece so that you all are pleased as a board.
And I can tell you, I didn't realize until you just said that, what you were saying in regards to, everybody's doing authentic literacy, because I thought it was an individual school. So if it was a district goal, we're all doing authentic literacy, then why does that have to even be on that document?
Right.
I want my school, what my school's specific to, and we're always looking for authentic literacy, whether it's written on that plan or not.
But if you had, and again, because Mr. Randolph's here, so I'm not picking on you, love you, man. But, but, but with, and with some things that came up negative this year with the graduation rate, and that would be specific.
Yes.
Boom. What are you doing about that? Because that's an issue. And I don't want to hear about your whatever.
Authentic-
Rainbow and snowflakes.
I think the authentic literacy is there because we haven't met that goal yet countywide. Is that correct?
And we're all working-
Once we've met that goal, we won't put that goal there. Yes?
Well, you'd raise the bar.
Yes.
Right, you would have a new goal.
Yes.
But once everyone is, am I correct?
Yes.
Authenticer?
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. We appreciate it very much. Ms. Carnegie?
I think she did a, did a great job. I don't have a whole lot to add to that, but just know I am not about compliance. And so one of the things that we talked about is how do you take something that has been historically a, a document of compliance and make it a living, breathing, useful tool that is driving true school improvement? And so I just applaud that group for the work that they've done. I think that they provided a lot of support and assistance to, to minimize the amount of time that had to go into the process, but make it more meaningful. And so we are starting those mid-year data chats. We've got them scheduled over the next three weeks, and we will be looking at where they are and, and making progress towards those goals. And so it's, I think that you'll find that the, the process is meaningful and not about compliance, because if it, if it is, then we got to change the process again.
I can say, when I met with my regional director, Renee Dudley, she was 100%. I am looking at these student school improvement plans, and I am like holding their, their feet to the fire, whatever acronym it is. But, and, and I do know that my principals right now are looking at their data, and that's, that's their goal now, and I assume they're going to soon now share it with superintendent. So my-
But then does that come to us then? Is that the intent? Because we are, are we going to know that mid-year?
Like a progress report, a progress monitoring.
Progress monitoring, are we going to know that?
So one of the things at, it's on the next, it's on the workshop for the 29th, correct? Is we're going to give an update on where we are with all of our mid-year data, and so you'll look forward to that on next Monday.
That was an amazing answer.
I know. We're already on it, right?
But in regards, but in regards to the mid-year data and the school improvement plan data, like all of that together, or just the mid-year data, not to?
It's, it's the mid-year data summary and-
Okay.
But those are the same types of targets and goals that were, are reflected in their school improvement plan. So it's, it's all one and the same.
Okay. You have a recommendation?
I do. I recommend, where are we? Oh, I recommend approval of 11.03 school improvement plans, accountability, and assessment.
For the recommendation?
They're moved.
All right. Second by Dr. Burns. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. All right, we are on to the superintendent's report.
You are, and I have asked Dr. Weiskopf to give the superintendent's update, and she's going to give you some information about our graduation rates, not focusing so much on the rates because you've seen a lot about that, but I thought it's timely for us to, to tell you, what are we doing about them? And so she's going to share those strategies that we have implemented in all of our schools.
Good evening. Have we ever had three PowerPoint presentations in a row? So-
And no popcorn.
Yeah, I know, yes.
I feel like there should be music.
Me too, right? So I think I've, you have this on your screen as well as I asked Natalie to pass it out for you if you wanted on paper as well, but I am pleased to give you some graduation rate updates and just kind of review where we are. I know there's been a lot of media coverage, but thank you for the opportunity to be here with you tonight and to kind of give some, some more information about it. So I wanted to start with just making sure we understand and just making sure we're all on the same page about sort of how it's configured and what our graduation rate entails. And so without getting too far into the weeds, just a reminder that it's based on a four-year adjusted cohort graduation rate. So just to define a cohort, it's a group of students on the same, that are on the same schedule to graduate based on the year entering ninth grade for the first time. So the graduation rates that you have in front of you or that we'll talk about tonight are actually a part of the 13-14 cohort. Does that make sense? So, and just to sort of reiterate the idea that why is it called adjusted versus unadjusted? The unadjusted cohort is any student who's ever entered the school. And from that 13-14 school year, that's everybody. So what we do is we do an adjusted cohort and removes all the students that have entered somewhere else. So as long as they are enrolled in another school, they are taken out of our cohort, and that makes our adjusted cohort. So that is how it's figured. The numerator includes all students who earn a standard diploma, but excludes students who have pursued a GED and any kind of special diploma. And we'll talk about that a little bit later, but I want to make sure you know who counts for the graduation and then who's in the denominator. And the denominator, of course, is all those students in the adjusted cohort for the graduation year. Just a reminder that this does graduation, it does lag by a year. So these are the students who graduated in the 16-17 school year. The next slide gives you kind of a five-year overview, just to give you kind of an idea of the color coding. Blue indicates any improvement over the previous year, gray indicates no change, and yellow indicates a decline. So it kind of gives you a nice picture in five years of where we are. So I'm going to pause for just a moment and let you kind of look at that. So we have three schools for the first time that have exceeded 90%, which is a goal of the superintendent, to have a 90% or greater. Those are, as you can see, East Ridge High School, Lake Manila High School, and Lake Virtual. Just a reminder that all of these numbers are actually rounded. So when it comes to school grades, you will notice schools like Eustis High, they will actually see an 80%. So they will actually make a percentage improvement based on the rounding up. So you might see a little, look a little different when we get the school grade calculations.
But what is the, the student population at Lake Virtual?
It is tiny.
It is small.
Yeah. Maybe 20. I mean, ser-
But their popular, their full-time population is, is smaller, right? And I actually don't have those exact numbers in front of me, but I could, I bet somebody could pull them for me really fast.
But it-
I think the class was-
But it's- Okay. It just seems odd to me that it would carry the weight that we had three in the 90s and one has like 20 kids.
Isn't the state set a certain, you have to have at least 10 kids in the cohort-
You have to have at least 10 kids in the-
In order to get a rate, so.
I mean, I had a charter, a group that wanted to bring a charter school here, and I sat down, and they said, they had 100% admission to college, and they had a 100% graduation rate. And when I said, how many graduated? It was three students. I mean, so seriously, I mean, you got to ask that next question.
When they do the district average, do they weigh them all the same, or is it like somehow ranked by the fact that East Ridge is huge and Lake Virtual is tiny? Or do they just take up this 2017 column?
Yeah, it's going to be all your numerators and all your denominators.
Okay, so it's by child.
It doesn't take the average of the averages.
Okay.
It takes the actual student.
Thank you.
So, and I guess back to your question, Mr. Mathias, I mean, if we had 10 kids or we had 25 kids in Lake Virtual, it's nice to see that they went from 63.9 to 91.7. So they had to do, so they had to make some big adjustments, I think.
I'm very proud for them, don't misunderstand. But does it carry the same weight?
No.
No.
Oh, okay. I think that's where I was going.
Their numerator and denominator are smaller than you.
Very small, in fact.
Yeah, good. Okay.
Did you, were you talking? Any other questions about? I just thought it was nice to kind of see a five-year look versus just a one-year increase-decrease, so. I don't think 109 graduated. That's, that's just how many full-time students they have, yeah. I think it's, I think it's in the 20s. I'm going to say 25, 28, if I remember.
24.
I think it's, I think it's in the 20s. I'm going to say 25, 28, if I remember. 24?
24 in the adjusted cohort, 22.
22? So 24 in the denominator, 22 graduated. So let's talk a little bit about the students who are not considered in this graduation rate number, but that we still, we still want to talk about these kids because they still have had some success. So out of the 3,109 students in the 16-17 cohort, 113 students earned a certificate of completion. And what that means is that they either don't, they did not have a 2.0 grade point average, or they have not passed one of the required tests, Algebra I, English, 10th grade English, ELA, and they do not have a concordant score. So they've met all the requirements except for the GPA or the required assessments for a regular standard diploma. But certainly there, they have earned a certificate of completion. 146 students were retained in grade 12. So those are students that hopefully we will see graduate in this, in over a five-year time span. And so they just aren't calculated in the four-year cohort, but they, we are still working with those students. 22 students earned a special diploma. These are for students that have the most significant needs by their IEP plan. While the state doesn't recognize that, we recognize that we did what was best for students. And so they're also in this particular group, but not considered in our graduation rate. And then 174 students went to the Adult Education Program. And so there was a time when there was a misconception that these students would be taken out of our cohort. And I want to assure you that we have corrected this misconception and work more carefully with those students in terms of being on the regular standard diploma track. So if you take those, these students, and you add our 78%, if you round up our graduation rate, and add the 15% here, you know, we actually have the ability to graduate about 93% of our students, if you consider the students who might be on a five-year track and go ahead and graduate this coming year. So it, I just want, they're not, we are still working with all students, even though they might not be configured in our So I thought we might look at it by subgroup. I think it's important to break this down a little further. So the next shows you, and this slide is a little bit busy, but I wanted to let you see sort of what it might look like by subgroup. And this is just, and this is just a two-year look. So you'll notice, blue again is an improvement. Gray indicates there's no change, and yellow indicates that there's a decline. White indicates that data was reported the previous year, but we don't have data for this year. And green, there's no prior year data. So our subgroup groups include ESE, Freem住 Lunch, At-Risk. The At-Risk category is defined by students who enter ninth grade with a Level 1 or 2 in reading and math. And our ELL population is also broken down by male and female. So I think the big news in this slide is that we are doing quite well with our ELL population. You'll notice down at the bottom, if you look at the district ELL population, we actually have had an increase of 27. That's quite significant, I think. As more of those students enter into our district, I think it's important to note that we are pretty successful with them. So I think that's something we should be proud of and like. To be honest with you, I was hesitant about color coding this chart. I didn't know how it would come out. And I am very pleased that there's a lot of blue, so. So one of the things that I said that I would do as the chief of transformation was I would look for strategies that, where schools were successful, and I'd help replicate those in other places. So one of the things, the first things that I did when these graduation rates came out is I called those schools who had a 90% or above rate and said, what's working for you? Because whatever's working for you, we need to do in some other places. I think it's commendable that two of the places that we have a 90% and above rate are two of our largest high schools. And I have to say, being a principal of a very large high school and achieving over 90% is a very difficult task. And so I commend both the leadership team and the teachers at those two high schools. I think it's important to note that that's, this is quite a job well done. So a couple of things that they shared with me, I had some long conversations with both of their school principals, and I just wanted to kind of share what they're doing. One is that they have a built-in time that holds all students accountable for remediation and acceleration. It's something that I did not know that all of our schools don't have, but they certainly talked a lot about that, the idea that they have to have time during the day for kids to be able to go back and learn things that they have not learned yet. And so that's a real important piece. They also use Avid Strategies implemented school-wide. And if you know anything about Avid, Avid goes right along with our ideas of reading, writing, thinking, and talking, and keeping students engaged. And so certainly those strategies, the WICAR Strategies, as they're called, align very closely with our district vision for instruction. The leadership team both, at both those schools, said that they had to take a very active role in looking at the students who were at risk, and they also have put an administrator in charge of monitoring. We can't leave this up to a data clerk or a guidance counselor alone. It takes a huge team, and the administration has said that they had to play a very active part in that. We've also got some mentoring programs going there, as well as when students leave, we, they sit down with them and conduct interviews, have chats with them. They talk about why they're leaving. They make sure they're enrolled somewhere else before they leave us, and make sure that they have a good solution, so they, so that we know that they are still continuing their schooling. They also use a lot of different programs, as you can see on that last bullet, to make during the day, after school, and they allow flexible school during the day to make sure those kids can, students can make up credits and prepare for the alternative concordant scores. So knowing some of that, as well as what we've already had in place, knowing what our data was last year, here are some things that we're working on district-wide. So we know that a lot can be, we can reach a lot more students if we have a common vision for instruction that allows for students to be actively involved and has opportunities for authentic literacy experiences. And so we are still working on that with leaders every month and teachers to implement a common vision for instruction that engages all students. And we all, you also know, we created the College and Career Readiness Department, who leads a lot of this work that's going on with acceleration and graduation rate. We would like to make sure that all schools have an opportunity for students to provide remediation and acceleration during the school day, as well as we also added the Graduation Resource Facilitators this year. And they meet monthly to monitor student progress and share how they're tracking student information. We also use those to partner with guidance and data clerks and administration and make sure that we have a team approach versus one person dealing with all the graduates. And so we have many, many people involved in making sure we have eyes on all these students to make sure that we're getting them to where they need to be. And we also have the Sylvan ACT Prep Program that you approved for all high schools. We had three high schools last year, but now we have in all high schools, thanks to the Education Foundation, who's helped, helped support that. And just a few others to note, the Performance Matters has a new grad tracker system, one of the things that we have, that we can see what new requirements are still needed by currently enrolled students. And then we also have a database pulled from Skyward that allows for us to see our unadjusted cohort, who track students who are no longer enrolled. So we go out and find them. Like, what are you doing? Make sure they're enrolled. What other things are they pursuing? We also have a new math progression that allows additional time for students in the early grades of ninth and 10th grades. We double-blocked some remediation pieces there. So we've been working on that with curriculum instruction. And then we also have a lot of training going on for school-based administrators. We also have expanded our Lake Virtual programs to extend all year versus just during the school year. So I think that's going to be a big help as well. So that's kind of the update that I have to share with you. Any questions? Any other questions?
I was sort of looking at the At-Risk, the numbers with the At-Risk. They have huge variation in the subgroups, just between the schools. Is that because it's a small population? Or is, are they, because sometimes if you have 200 At-Risk kids, you know, your percentages might be different than if you have five, what Bill was saying.
Uh huh. So- Sure. Well, based on enrollment, I mean, you obviously have less kids at Umatilla High.
Right, because it looks like Umatilla's doing fantastic with At-Risk kids. I mean, much better than-
They are. Oh.
I guess some of that stems from the middle schools' performance in that, in that region. So if you get a certain feeder pattern that's churning out more kids that are Level 1 or 2 in reading and math, then the high school's going to have more kids that they're going to have to keep up with.
So kind of tagging back on Katie Pearson's presentation on the school improvement planning process, one of the things that we've done is we've disaggregated this data, showed it to the regional executive directors, and they're having conversations with principals about what are we doing with this population to make sure that we are moving these different cohorts of kids. And just like you said, it does start, this, this would actually all stem from junior high. So those At-Risk population does, it comes from an eighth-grade score. So having the conversations with the junior, with the middle schools also is of huge benefit to make sure that we get these rates up and not have so many people that are in the category, right? We would want less students in the At-Risk category.
And one of the things that, two years ago, as we were talking about our graduation rates, because this has been a thing, was how we were tracking these kids. And if a child leaves, just, this is for my edification. So if they leave Leesburg High School and they go to First Baptist, how are we getting credit for them graduating at First Baptist?
If they're enrolled in another school, they're taken off, they're, they're taking off of our adjusted cohort. So, but we have to go find that out. So if we don't code it right, if we don't actually have the right code attached to that student that says they've left us and gone to a private school and are enrolled there, then they get stuck in our denominator, and that's where we get, that's where we get into trouble, right? So-
That's what we found, that we were losing, we were being penalized because we weren't-
Sure. We have to find, we have to find students if they've left us. We have to figure out, if we don't know where they've gone, we have to find out where they've gone, to make sure. Because if we have, if they have not gone anywhere, they're going to be in our, in our cohort. And that's a problem.
What, at what, do they start counting in our cohort their ninth grade year, or does it count in kindergarten?
No, ninth grade year. They enter our, so this data is from the kids that are entered in 13-14. And so this upcoming year will be 14-15, of course. But, so you're right. So again, some of those strategies, they sound very simple, like we're training administrators and data clerks and how to code. It is, it's crucial for us, so.
And it's crucial that we-
But know where kids are.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. We want the kids to be successful. We want to make sure that if we can get them, because if we can get them back, like if there's a way, if they're out there and they've, they've left us and they have not enrolled, if we can get them back and say, hey, if you would come, we try that too. Like, you know, if we can get you back and get you graduated and back on track, we'll, but we have to, we do have to have, we do have to know where they are.
And then where does the five play? Because that's, I always thought the cohort was four, four plus one, like you got an extra year.
Yeah. So we are really, really working on that misconception. So although five, we want all kids to graduate. And we know that some of them take five years. But we're really working on how to make it happen in four, because what counts is four. And we all know that you go, you take a K-12 system, not that many people go to school in a K-13. They don't, they don't anticipate the K-13 system. It's not exactly how it was done, right? So we want to sort of stop the idea that it's okay for kids to get behind and take a fifth year. So although we, of course, are going to keep them and graduate them, we really want to work on their ninth and 10th grade year to make sure they're on track. So doing some of that remediation, acceleration, getting those credits made up, making sure they're working on those concordant scores if they don't have it. And part of it is being in a large high school, it's hard to keep track of all the kids, right? Because you're not, you're dealing with 400 seniors, but you have three other grade levels that you're still working with on a day-to-day basis. So part of this tracking system, the grad resource teachers, the College and Career Readiness Director, all of those people play a part in making sure that we have a good tracking system to keep track of kids and what they're doing, and make sure that there, we have remediation in place to help them get through.
But do we get any credit for that fifth?
No.
Okay.
So when summer school went away, and now we have online classes, so do we have, is this now in, is it currently in place that at all high schools, there is grade recovery via what, Edufori? Eduf something?
Well, certainly we'll have like, like, I don't, you know what? I think, I think so, but I can't, honestly, Dr. Burns, I'm not sure I can answer that with 100% certainty that this summer we have it planned for all high schools to have it. But we do have credit recovery always happening in every high school. But I don't know if it goes on, Diane, I mean-
Well, and all schools have, all students have access to Lake Virtual.
Lake Virtual.
Which is one of the biggest barriers that we heard, is that they didn't have the opportunity during the summer unless they wanted to go to Florida Virtual, which then they had to start at the beginning. They couldn't do any credit recovery through Florida Virtual, because they make you start the course at the beginning of the course. So with, through Lake Virtual, we'll be able to offer summer programs to get kids remediated back on track. So that's going to be hugely beneficial. We think we'll see a big impact on that as well. But we, it's just never been open for students year-round before.
Okay, so this will be new this summer?
Yes, this summer it will be available.
Mr. Mathias, to go back to the idea of the five-year, so just so you know, that was the slide about they're not considered. There, we have, we do currently have 146 students that were, that are on that fifth year that we, so we've got some work to do.
But it seems like to me that there ought to be like at least a warm fuzzy, because, because you held on.
Yeah, because you held on.
You did it.
I mean, you got them through it. You know what I mean? I don't know.
And that, that used to be the case. When the school grading first came out, they did have, you did get credit for your five-year cohort and your four-year cohort, and they were weighted differently.
Right.
But now they've, no, they've all come out. Special diplomas used to count. They've taken those out. GEDs don't count. None of those other opportunities count within our graduation rates any longer.
Does summer course count for that fifth year? If they do it in the summer right after graduation, is that still considered the plus five?
Yes. But if they do it the other three years, it's not plus five, is it?
Right, right.
The first day of, yeah, the first day of school. So you're right, the summer kids, if they pass the concordant score or something.
Yeah, that's what you can do.
Well, that's good, then.
Okay. I'm, I'm thinking, Ms. Young, did you have any, did you gain some insights too from this? It was kind of nice to have you as a precursor, knowing that Mrs. Weiskopf is coming up. We, we do have our eyes laser-focused on this, and I think you can see from the presentation there. Yes, definitely. Good. Well, we'll give you $5 later for bringing that up earlier, so.
Yeah, exactly. You were a nice preview, right? I do want to assure you that we are doing everything we can to work on these graduation rates, because the bottom line is we want kids to graduate and be successful in the workplace. And so we want to improve this rate for all schools and commend those who have reached that 90% and above, and we'll get the rest there, so.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, superintendent, do you have a recommended, no, we don't have a recommendation. Where are we even on? Graduation rates?
Superintendent's report.
Good grief, superintendent's report.
I recommend that we move on to the next.
Thank you. Listen, this is our longest meeting, is this not? I'm just saying. It feels more like a workshop.
This is how we pay Steve.
And Dr., and Dr. Tibbetts leaves after he says we need to have longer meetings.
And we, speaking of workshops, don't forget that we have our workshop on Monday at 9:30.
Yes.
Really?
[laughing]
Any letters of condolence?
No, I actually signed, unfortunately, a number of them today, and they'll be on the next agenda. We'll mention those. The ones that are on my list for tonight were ones that I mentioned last time, so I will not repeat them.
Okay, now that we're back on track, Mr. Mathias?
I just want to thank Mrs. Young again. You bring pride and distinction to your school. And with Mr. Randolph here, I really enjoyed, Mr. Randolph, the, we have work to do and no excuses, thoroughly enjoyed that, your quotes in the paper, and the spirit of the school. And you see the spirit here. And, and literally can speak, since my business is in Leesburg, that, that anytime when they had F and D schools, the community surrounded and embraced their schools and took ownership with the leadership of Dr. Burns and support, I can expect nothing but great things. So, and that's all I have to say about anything.
Dr. Burns?
Thank you. So, yeah, I think the Leesburg community is really embracing the school and all of our schools, actually. I wanted to thank the Angel Organizations. We had a program, we have a program in Leesburg where the, the community came together and has, and the CDC, who was the CDC? Community Development, yes. CDC, sorry, I was getting confused with the official one. East and West came together, and they all offered $500 to all of the elementary schools and middle schools to help with, with attendance. And, and then local companies and businesses matched that $500. And so I wanted to thank those organizations. And then A+ Printing printed anything that was needed for the schools. One of the schools chose to do an incentive of a dance type thing. Or I think they got $3 each. Each kid got $3 for a dance, which I thought was really cool, which then they used to pay for the, for the dance itself, which was terribly clever. So I wanted to thank A+ Printing, Beacon College, the CDC East and the CDC West, the Leesburg Chambers, Leesburg Partnership, Leesburg Regional Medical Center, and the Christian Worship Center, who all just, I mean, the Leesburg community is so warm, and, and they really will pull together and help our schools out. And I'm just so pleased that we have that support in our community. I also wanted to congratulate Treadway, who finally left. But I know they worked so hard. And every time I'd go to the school, the, they had a thermometer that would get a little bit higher every single time. And it, they worked so hard at, at every bear fair, everything. And finally, thank you, Ms. Young. You represented Leesburg High beautifully. So thank you for coming. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Dr.
And one of the other things that Reagan mentioned tonight was attendance, and they focus on the importance thereof. So in that spirit, I'd like to extend some thanks to Pastor Jose Gonzalez down in the Four Corners area, who has just been so embracing of Sawgrass Bay Elementary with some various rewards and incentives for students to come to school under the idea of, I'm here all year. I was invited to be part of Friday's celebration, where the fourth graders had the highest percentage of attendance for the last quarter. And I'll tell you that they were all talking about how they're going to remain the champions and how they are going to continue coming to school and, and be the winner so they can be part of the next year award, and challenging the other grade levels. And, and that kind of competition hopefully will continue to spur increases in their, in their attendance rates. And then the other big item that I was, gives you the warm fuzzy feelings, the Literacy Week has kicked off, and I was excited to go visit Groveland Elementary today, where I read to five kindergarten classes. This is my favorite book. It's called Mark the Magnificent. And I want to say it's somewhat biographical in nature, but maybe the production of the bunny rabbit at the end of the show- end of the show seals the deal for the, the kids to, to love reading, but here, here was the exciting thing, being in a room full of kindergarteners who love to read, boy, I tell you, there's, there's hardly anything more thrilling than that, and, and to think about, I was thinking about the, the shifts that our district has gone through this year in, in homework and, and how my own students have, have evolved in that. Seeing the, seeing us drift away from computer-based, i-ready, i-station assignments nightly to, to just reading has been fantastic. My, my son's a fourth grader, and his reading night every, or his, his reading homework every night is to read for twenty minutes, and just being engaged in actual book with real pages is, is wonderful. I've never heard a single complaint about doing reading homework versus, boy, let me tell you, the dread that came out of, oh, I got to have i-station. Not seeing that anymore is fantastic, so great move for the district, and love it.
Thank you.
Authentic literacy?
Yes, authentic literacy.
Authentic literacy.
That's authentic literacy.
All right, well, I, I just want to say tomorrow, well, not tomorrow, Wednesday and Friday, I will be, well, Wednesday I'm at Treadway, and Friday I'm at Eustis Heights, read across Lake County, and then reading Wednesday at Treadway, so, and then there's others. I, I found out I was double-booked, and I had to call one and say, hey, you know, I'm at this school, and I'm supposed to be at your school, and it's in the same timeframe, can you excuse me this time? She goes, how did she get you first? I said, her email came before yours, so, but I, I, it, it is exciting to be able to go into the classroom and read to these, these young kids, and they just sit there and they're, you know, sometimes you get one that's a little bit, you know, out of, out of place, or saying, hey, you know, wanting the attention, so I give him the attention, I bring him up and let him read with me, so, but it is, it's great to be able to do that. Also, I just want to say hats off to Ms., Mrs. Briggs, this weekend, I saw that we received an email and corrections to some information that had been given out, not from our staff, but from outside, that had gotten into some publicity and given us a bad information about how our budgets and things had been disarrayed over the year, and she went back and found records where it wasn't actually anything to do with us, it happened back in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, to correct it, so I, I have told her many times, you know, you do post to go home on the weekend and enjoy the weekend, but that's the superintendent's place to tell her that, not mine, but still, I'm like, I see all these things happening, not only her, others, that our staff is out there, they're on salary, I understand, but they're out there, they're, they're sending us things during the times of, that they should be enjoying family as well, but I appreciate their dedication and to clear that up, to, to make it where we are, we're on the right track. This morning at, at seven o'clock, I was at the hospital with a good friend, he's an employee of Lake County School System, he works down in the South Maintenance with HVAC, and he went in with gallbladder problem, last night he had a heart attack, and this morning they did surgery on him, and he needs your prayers, he needs your prayers, his, his name is Aaron Sperry, so just remember him if you will, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. I think one of the hardest parts about sitting in this chair is that you have things that you're gonna say, that then by the time you get here, they're, they've been said, so Literacy Week is coming up, super excited about that, and, and honestly, was going to just reiterate what Mr. Campbell said about our staff, I don't, I think this past week and a half has been overwhelmingly obvious of the work that, that each of you do, and not just those sitting in here, but dependent on where I've gone or who I've called, they've always had the answers, they've never, ever come up short in my expectations, and, and it's eight-thirty-five, and they're still sitting in the meeting that we're, that we're conducting, so we appreciate your hard work, and we appreciate your leadership in that matter, and we look forward to what's coming. I know there was a lot of positivity in our graduation rate and our school improvement plans, and I think our students are gonna be the ones that really bear the success that we're seeing, so. A lot of science fairs coming up, I don't, didn't hear that mentioned, we have science fairs coming up, and the district science fair is coming up, so I do want to recognize the Yumattila Kwanis, I called them last minute to come help me out with a number of projects that I had agreed to judge, and, and they showed up in full force with a ton of help and very experienced, and just wonderful to be with, and now I am dropping off my